Good morning. And at this time, we are going to call Southern University's Board of Supervisors Committee meetings to order. Before we start, I would just like to say, we have, Mr. Yeliot is one of our board members, who is from this area, and he is going to introduce and be in charge of our invitations this morning. Mr. Yeliot.
Good morning, everyone. Today, we've got an invitation from my pastor, Pastor Harry Blake. He can, at Mount Canaan Missionary Baptist Church, Louisiana. Okay. Well, I mean, yeah, he's a major contributor to our community. He's a strength in pastors, leaders, politicians, at the simplest level, black families, which produce more leaders. His Civil Rights Hall of Fame, so it's not an privilege to have him here this morning.
What he really means, I'm old man. What procedure shall I ask you to say? All right, would you join me by standing like you do? Heavenly Father, we invoke thy manifestation of thy presence with us today. We ask that you would give us knowledge for our ignorance and wisdom where we like it. We pray a lot that you will give each person here symbol as trustee members, as leaders, as directors of our university, the insight, so that they may give direction that's pleasing to you and productive for all. We pray thy peace upon our communities and upon the world. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Now, Pastor, we do have a little something for you. Now, I'd imagine your wall of accomplishments includes, you know, your Civil Rights Hall of Fame and your honorary doctorates, but this one is special for me, because I get to present it to you and thank you publicly for what you've done in front of me. So, thank you.
Reverend Chairman, I would just like to, Reverend Chairman, I would just like to as well express my great appreciation for Pastor Harry Blake. Pastor Blake has shepherded the Beltwood family for fifty years. And our entire family owes him in such high regard. We see him not only as our pastor, in many cases, as our father. So, I too would just like to express my appreciation for guiding us over the years and let you know that you are so very special to all of us.
I recognize. Dr. Torres.
I would remiss to let this moment pass. I have to make that quick decision. Reverend?
Yeah, did you get him to turn around? I just wanted to say something to him before he gets away. See, part of getting old is not picking you up to hear again. This gentleman is one of the most special persons in this city, in this passion, in this state. There can never be enough accolades paid to him for the contributions that he has made to the liberation of this town and to this state. It's marvelous that he is with us for all that he's done over the years. I used to wonder in his younger years whether or not he'd ever get this far because of the violent communities that we came up in. And when I see what's happening today across the world, across nations, across this country, and other places in the South, it doesn't seem so bad anymore. But if it does seem better, it's because of men like you who have given themselves immensely and your family to sure. And so, thank you so very much for all that you've meant to all of us. We appreciate you. God bless you.
Again, Pastor Blake, as I spoke with Mr. Yeliot about you, and we were conversing back and forth, he assured me, he said, you know, Pastor Blake is a very good man, and he has a lot of great qualities. You know, he is a doctor, he said, but he doesn't want the doctor to be on his certificate. So, I say to you, you have it, and we're very pleased to have you, and you are Pastor Doctor Blake Steele. Thank you. Thank you. Pastor.
That's right. Hold up, hold up. I just, I'd be remiss not to say because certainly Pastor Blake is one of my mentors. I found my wife at the Mount Canaan Church, and Reverend Blake married us and put us up in a hotel the first month we were married. Certainly, I am proud to have him here. He's an honorable person. If you see him, you would not think that he's accomplished what he has. But many don't know how to read well, and he was in his twenties. So, I think that's important because a lot of our young people, to understand that's not how you start, it's how you end up. And Reverend Blake has been an inspiration to many, not only inspiration, but one who helps and who believes in young pastors. And I want to perfectly thank him because I wouldn't be what I am today were not for that man when growing up and not having a pastor. He embraced me, and I want to perfectly thank him for all those years that he has been a friend and a mentor and for allowing me to find the best thing that ever happened to me out of Mount Canaan Church. Be sure to tell her I said that.
I don't want to miss this opportunity, but, and you don't know this Reverend Blake, but I was a, in college, I worked in the Activity Center, the F.G. Clark Activity Center. Being a child of poverty, I needed all of the help I could get. And one of my jobs was to work the Baptist youth in camp. And you spoke there one year from the subject of "There is a land here." And I thought your entire sermon, you were talking to me.
You weren't.
And I left with so much inspiration and encouragement from those words, and I just want, that's been at least thirty years, that I want to thank you because your words had a profound impact on me, and I know the many other young people who travel there across the state. So, thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you again. And at this time, I'm going to ask Attorney Quir, if he will come to the center with Mr. Duncan, so that you can be sworn in. Mr. Duncan is our new student board member, and we're glad to have him here today. At this time, if you would, in my words, you can tell us a little about yourself.
Okay, so, is everyone here?
You can. Who gives one? He has.
Good morning, everyone. So, I will not stand before you all alone, but I would just like to introduce myself and tell you a bit about me and what I plan to do. So, my name is Armon Duncan. I am a Senior Business Management and Marketing Dual Major with the Concentration and Human Resources and a native of Alexandria, Louisiana. And as the Student Government Association President, I just felt the need to put the university back in the hands of the students. I've worked in various aspects across the campus, from being a senator and serving as a class president and other aspects outside of just student government, but around the campus and working within my college and just really finding the need to give the students the best opportunity possible. So, a part of that I felt, in a part of that, and I felt it was incumbent upon me to have a seat at the table, which is why I pursued this position. So, I look forward to working with each and every one of you to just help Southern University at Baton Rouge and its entire system reach its potential and reach levels that we've always spoke of and dreamed about, and to just really tap into that potential and bring it to reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan, and we do look forward to working with you. Dr. Davis.
I just want to welcome Mr. Duncan. I was at Duncan's school business for the last twelve years, up until December thirty-first, sixteen. But I didn't get a chance to teach him, but I thought I did. He sounds like somebody I might have taught.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Duncan. And now, we are ready for our academic, what are the words? Academic affairs. Our Academic Affairs Committee meeting. At this time, Dr. Torres, will you conduct our meeting?
Chairman, Chairman, Chairman. Secretary, will you, like, roll the call?
Dr. Gani, Dr. Torres.
Here.
Tony Clayton, here. Dr. Davis, here. Mr. Duncan, here. Reverend Gatt.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Reverend Torres.
Thank you very much. My son, our kin, was adopted, getting a little bit of adoption.
Hello, Ambassador, the unit is ready.
Sir. The department will be secondly about what is printed. Any questions? All those in favor, you understand, are eyes. I have a close, and I have a close. Now, we have a close conversation. Is there anyone who has a comment they'd like to make on the item relative to the agenda of the academic affairs committee? So, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one to approach, colleagues, we move on to General Item Five, Special Presentation, partnership partnership issue beyond, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I would like to refer to the Honorable Tony Clayton, who indeed called upon me to recognize a representative from IBM who's interested in engaging in a substantive partnership with Southern. Mr. Clayton, would you be took on as an interview target?
Thanks for the call, Mr. President. To keep him in line with the Chair Ladies, he, when she first got on this board, that she wanted us, as board members, to reach out into our respective communities and formulate or enhance relationships with the business community, with our students. To keep him in line with that, I want to bring to the fore Mr. Michael Moore, who's an executive with IBM. He travels the country, he writes computer programs, algorithms, and things of that nature. He was just telling me earlier about this computer Watson that IBM has, and it's interesting to converse with him, and you'll see in the upcoming future that the relationship that, when he and I spoke about it, IBM was all over. I mean, I've had several phone calls from other executives, and I asked him if he would come for a couple of minutes, Mr. Moore, and that was funny, guys, because he's had a long presentation. But anyway, I think you'll find that the marriage between IBM and Southern will be greatly enhanced as a result of the Chair Lady and the President formulating a relationship with your company, Mr. Moore. So, what I mean, for the do, Mr. Michael Moore.
Thank you, Tony. I just want to, so. I just want to tell you, it's like I've been invited to church by a friend, and I didn't want to disrupt what you were doing here, but like Tony said, I travel all over the world for IBM. I have been with them for thirteen years, and I have kind of a unique position where I am sent to form teams, to develop solutions for problems that already exist. Everywhere I go, I try to be an ambassador for the company and for myself personally. I try to make friends, I try to integrate in the community, I try to be part of anything that I think I might be able to help with. I'm a guest of the state of Louisiana for the next few months due to a project I'm running in Baton Rouge, and I fly out on Fridays, I come back in on Sunday nights, and I run a team that is doing rapid development on a special project for the company right now. I met Tony a few days ago, and he invited me to come and speak. I can't overexpress how much I would like to help any, any way I can. Like I said, I make a habit, the company knows very well that everywhere I go, I make new friends and relationships, that most of which are very long lasting. And I can't personally make any promises for the opportunities in Louisiana, but I know that the leaders at the CIC, the Klein Innovation Center of Baton Rouge are more than willing to listen to any opportunities that I think that we may have, and I do have some possibilities from some experimental things I've done in other places that have been very effective. I'm good at recruiting folks, I'm good at picking out talent, good at identifying people who can do things that other people don't see, and, like I say, I have a very high success ratio, mostly because I'm good at making friends. That's all. I don't want to waste nothing.
Briefly tell us about the interactions with classrooms that you propose. Mike, and let me tell you, Mike got off a plane, and I had him at last, that's why he doesn't have a suit on, because he alternates flights, fly up here to the rest of us for a couple of months. But briefly tell us, when you and I were talking about how you can take our kids in classrooms and go with them.
So, one of the solutions that I've used to great effect in other areas where we have not necessarily gaps, but opportunities for resource types, I will go to a place or a business, and I'll walk directly into an area where there's a group meeting, and I'll make an announcement about who I am, what I do, and then I'll set up a small kiosk in that space somewhere and invite anyone that has any inclination to come and talk to me about what they're doing right now. I'll interview them very quickly in the hallway. Like I say, I'm good at triaging folks and helping sort out the ones that actually are really motivated to do things. And a lot of times, in other school systems I've worked with, there's, it is not always the person with the highest grade point average or the most attendance, or it is the person that says, I say, "Well, what do you do after school?" And he said, "Well, I have, I take care of my mother, and I have both my brothers I'm responsible for." And that kid is still nailing down a good GPA, he's making it happen. That is the space that we can operate in. Because that motivation, you can't train it with somebody. It doesn't come with a GPA, it comes with caring about things. Tony hears me talk about my grandmother alive, she said, "If you're going to get up and go to work every day, put doing good at the beginning of everything you try to do, and everything else to sort itself out. Just do good." And I think having a personal interaction opportunity with anyone who's looking for something to do, to advance themselves, and finding that motivation will is the most secretive thing that we can find with people.
Thank you, Reverend. Last year, the President and Mike spoke this morning, they were good together, he or me, he wants me to bring him to the Computer Science Department, I'll do that in upcoming weeks, so he can interact with the staff over there and start a collaboration with us. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to talk, and it's a personal privilege to bring IBM representative to our schools. Thank you, Michael.
Dr. Torres. Yes. I would like to also thank you for coming and sharing with us. I especially see where the motivational tactics will improve any part and all of the areas of Southern University. I feel that that's something that we can actually grow from. Thank you again for coming. I would also like to ask Mr. Clayton, I think it was the first or second month that I became Chair, and he brought a special guest to meeting. Will you give us an update on that one? This is the second time he has brought someone, and I found it to be very profitable. So, Mr. Clayton, please share it with the board and the audience and the chancellors where we are on that project.
So, that person is a reservoir engineer, Michelle, out of Houston, Texas. She has set up shop over in the Engineering Department, she's putting together curriculum, they're on, Michelle is there, their program has, I mean, I'm not much on engineering speak, but they're on our campus, and they're reservoir engineers, the engineers who go in and look at these oil reserves in Louisiana and tell whether or not to extract all out or to let it stay to store. And so, Michelle has now begun the process of educating our students on becoming experts in reservoir engineering. So, the project has begun, and they're on campus.
Excuse me, the sound engineer is saying that we're getting some complaints online, that they cannot hear us. So, if you will, will you speak directly into the mic? Just give us your last statement, Mr. Clayton.
Well, our organization is on Southern's campus, they have a reservoir, their senior reservoir engineer, engineer who's housed on our campus, creating a curriculum to educate our kids in reservoir engineering, if that's a proper way to say it. So, the process has begun, and they're on campus.
Thank you. Thank you, and thanks, thank you for all that you're doing for Southern University, Mr. Clayton. Thank you, Dr. Torres.
When we move on to Item Action Item Six, Request Approval of Dr. Juan Luma Shuju as a Klein Peter Family Endowed Professorship Chair, issue be all right. Dr. Young.
Good morning, Madam Chair, ladies, Honorable members of the board, Dr. Belton. Dr. Emma Limo Shuju is currently a professor of urban education in Southern University of Baton Rouge's School of Education. He spent the prior four years as the Dean of the College of Education at SUNO, in addition to Dean of the Graduate School and the Provost of Southern University. He submitted an application to be the Klein Peter Family Endowed Professorship. This position was currently held by a faculty member in the School of Education who had retired. So, I respectfully submit this application to you and ask for approval.
We did a motion, okay.
I moved, having known him for a while and seeing his, his impact on the university here and other locations, I think we deserve this, so I make the motion.
Is that second?
I'm second.
Then I can move to the second. We approve the section item. Any question?
Other questions, you are clear.
Yes, Mr. Clayton.
Explain to me the way our endowed.
Will you speak directly in the mic?
Explain to me the way our endowed professorships work? Is it that you take a hundred thousand dollar investment, and the interest from that money goes to that professor to further his studies, or to further his, help him with curriculum? How does it work?
Dr. Young, would you attest that?
Yes, sir. Our policy states that faculty members endowed professorships can receive up to a five thousand dollar stipend annually, in addition to an extra twenty-five hundred dollars that can be used to support research, students, travel, et cetera. So, those awards are made annually.
Next one, thanks.
It's been moved to the second, that the action item you approve, all of those in February, they're signed by, opposed to have it. The next item will be attended information item, report on accreditation status of all programs by campuses. And then, it's Dr. Young.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Dr. Torres. If you would please refer to the handout at the top that states Southern University's system status of accreditations, and thank you very much for the opportunity to provide you with an update on the status of our accreditations across the system. I'd like to start with just a small discussion about the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges, commonly known as SACs COC. And as you can see, we know the mission, the mission of SACs is to ensure educational quality across campuses. SACs is our regional accrediting body, so there are regional, national, regional, and specific program accrediting bodies. SACs is our regional accrediting body, and it provides oversight to ensure that our educational programs are of quality and that we are making sure that our students are All institutions in the Southern University system that are eligible for SACs COC accreditation are accredited. You'll see in the middle of this document, the SACs COC timeline. Both Southern University of Baton Rouge and Southern University of New Orleans are part of the class of 2020. This means that during December of 2017 this year, in between December and January, we will have an orientation with SACs COC, followed by our Decennial Report being due in September of 2019, the QEP being due in November of 2019, and our most important onsite visit occurring somewhere in between January and April of 2020. Our Shreveport Campus is a part of the class of 2021, so you would just add one year to the previous dates that I mentioned. And our Law Center was just accredited in 2015 with an initial application. Their QEP and compliance certification will be due in the fall of 2019, followed by their interim report being due in the fall of 2025. So, you heard me mention earlier that programs have specific program accreditations. Not all programs have an accredited body. Most do, but all do not. The chart below denotes the number of specialized accreditations at each campus, followed by the number of programs that are fully accredited and the percentage of programs that are fully accredited. And I do apologize, the Law Center is not listed there, it must be in a hidden field, but the Law Center, the Law Center is actually at 100% of its only program being accredited, so it is accredited, followed by Southern University of Baton Rouge enjoying an accreditation rate of 93.3%. We have two programs which are not accredited. SUNO takes pride in having all of its programs accredited, and the Shreveport Campus at a rate of 88.9%. So, if you would just peruse the pages that follow, you will actually see the details of those programs, followed by followed by the degree that the program offers, the status of the accreditation, and those next actions. The last page of this document contains some frequently asked questions about accreditation. Just in case you get bored, you're really interested in knowing about it, I encourage you to read that last page. It gives a nice overview of accreditation. So I'll take any questions that you may have.
Yes, yes, one of the two programs not accredited on Baton Rouge campus.
Yes, sir. The master's degree in clinical mental health counseling, and the undergraduate degree program in, it's the didactic program in dietetics. And that falls under family and consumer sciences.
Why, why, yes, that, that was one of the questions. On page one, family and consumer sciences pending. What's, what's the status pending?
The family and consumer sciences program is actually in the process of submitting an application for reaffirmation.
So they, so is they have a timeline? You said September, review schedule, September?
Yes, that's the annual.
That's right around the corner. Are they ready?
We hope so, yes, sir.
We have a program that we got the warning on. Is that up for reaccreditation?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The warning that we got from SACs, at the end of the year, first of the year, that program a part of any of these social programs accredited?
SACs provides the overall regional accreditation. So SACs has, and how many standards did the Dr. Belton write it? Sixty-something standards, I believe, that we have to provide evidence of compliance for. Our warning with one year of monitoring is in four areas, four standards. So it's not necessarily program-specific, but it's actually for the whole institution. So SACs oversees all programs.
I didn't hear your question, sir. I was the first to, uh, of this. Excuse me. So because I'm a new kid on the block, I do have a question for Claire. So where some of these programs don't necessarily have an accrediting body, what standards do we have in place for them? How do we kind of navigate that?
SACs COC. So SACs is the overarching accrediting agency that oversees all programs and study, in addition to every single thing that we do on a daily basis.
Yes, Mr. Clayton.
Dr. Clayton was asking a question, whether or not the, I guess, the preparation team, whether or not you guys are ready for the upcoming SACs visit? You responded, and I hope so. Tell me, what are any issues you have that cause you to have pause or causes you concern as to why you're not confident that y'all are prepared and that you're gonna pass this thing?
Yep. So one of the, one of the biggest challenges, and then I'll come back with the corrective action. One of the biggest challenges that we have is making sure that we are collecting data to demonstrate student learning. So in most exit visits that I've been a part of, one common comment is that Southern University has a lot of data. We collect a lot of data. But we have to strengthen ourselves as it relates to taking that data, making decisions to strengthen our program. So the reason you heard me say is that I hope so is because we're putting measures in place to make sure that we're closing the loop. And that's the process of collecting data, analyzing it, writing to make sure that we are strengthening our programs based on the data collected. So accredited bodies call that closing the loop. One of the main things that we're doing is launching the professional development series known as Focus on a Faculty, with a focus on instructional strategies, assessment, writing student learning outcomes, and actually assessing student learning outcomes and program learning outcomes. So that's the corrective action, to making sure that we are not only collecting the data, but using that data to strengthen our programs.
Let me speak, that, data. Is that something that you can maybe marry up with IBM and, you know, off-site company like that to help Southern with this collection and formatting of data so they can be in a presentable form?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thanks for giving me or us the corrective action to that problem. That was impressive.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We move on to action item eight. Other businesses, any other business for the committee? Mr. Pardon? Mr. Pando?
In January of this year, Dr. Gates had an opportunity to go to a meeting that was being held with the, in the academics department. I want to say that you were there. And at that meeting, we brought up some information. We actually talked about it here at the board. And what it was, it was about the letter that is being sent out. As we know, each year we have 5,000 plus that apply for admissions to Southern University. I got a letter from a parent. If you would, I just want to share just the letter that comes from the university. Now, remember this. This is what a freshman who sent his application off to school to go to Southern, he wants to go to Southern, okay? And he's waiting for that letter to come back to see if he's accepted. And this is him opening a letter for the very first time, okay? It says, "Thank you for applying to Southern University of Baton Rouge. After careful evaluation of your application materials, we have determined that you do not meet the criteria for immediate admissions to SUVR as a freshman. However, we believe that you are a good candidate for admissions to SUVR, SUS LA Connect program. The program is cooperative, is a cooperative agreement between Southern University of Baton Rouge and Southern University of Shreveport. We will enable you to promptly begin your college education here in Baton Rouge." So this is the first line. And the reason I bring this up is because we had spoken about it as far as the wording goes, as far as the wording goes on these letters. And we mentioned it at the meeting with regards to, perhaps, congratulations, you have been accepted to the Southern University system. We look forward to your enrollment, and we put the ball basically back in their court. And we say, "You contact us, you're accepted." But just imagine a letter like this being received for the very first time. And we, you know, we can accommodate anybody who calls us at their GPA, their ACT, but this is the letter that we received. And I know we spoke on it, but I would hope, Mr. President and Chair, that we can find a way to make this letter somewhat more inviting to first-time freshmen. Again, this letter, it really got me when I saw it, indeed.
And we will, as you pointed out, we will engage in some diligence in trying to find the most appropriate language to represent students admitted into Southern. We, we, we must be sensitive to not misrepresenting ourselves. And that is one of the standards to which we have to comply with, with SACs. It was very important that we do not misrepresent to anyone that they are, that they can be admitted to SUVR. Because that's the institution of first choice. But I do agree that we can massage the language such that we could give more guidance in terms of how they can enroll at Southern.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Ruttles, I don't want to engage into exposing private conversation, but I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege. I had a conversation with Mr. Ruttles the other day, and those of us who affectionately know him knows that he has two of the finest young boys that a man can have. One of them is oldest boy, Dylan. He was sharing with me that the kid is in 11th grade. And he said, "Tony, I get a letter, well, my, like, my kid gets a letter a week from schools all around the country inviting this kid to come to college." He has not yet received the letter from Southern. Now, and his academics are high. He may not brag on this kid, but I'll take that from his mom, from their mother. So, but why aren't we tracking these kids? Why isn't this kid getting a letter? Something is, is, is missing with your administration, Mr. President. And I don't know who's at fault for it, but that's a letter, it's a stamp. And this kid will make a choice. That's, that's a lot to a 16, 17-year-old kid when he gets a letter from a university saying, "Hey, we want you up here." And I hate to call you out on that tomorrow. You shared that with me in confidence, but I think the whole family should know that. And I guarantee you, there's some folks online saying, same thing with my kid from a legacy perspective, haven't even heard from this school. And I wish you, you, when you meet with your staff, you put something in place where the young Dylan Ruttles of the world can at least communicate with their home-based university. One, thank you.
One, one, first.
Yes, Mr. Pardon?
If I do, Mr. Chair. I, I would like to see the university echoing Tony and others. Like, this young man, a Morehouse graduate, he shouldn't have been a Southern graduate. We shouldn't, we shouldn't, and I know Florida A&amp;M president's there one time was going around and giving scholarships to all of those who were qualified for the top schools in America, those national merit finals and semifinals. And he went around, President Congress, and Florida A&amp;M had the largest number of highly talented students in America because one man got the list, the list is available to us, in particular in, in our market area, which is state of Louisiana, Shreveport, New Orleans, Baton Rouge, regional areas. That we ought to at least send some type of invitation to these schools. And I won, echoing, I had 20 some that finished at the end of that class. And neither Southern nor LSU recruited my son. And, and I was disappointed Tulane recruited. Only school in Louisiana that recruited was Tulane University. And I remember they got a poor ride to Tulane, ended up only in my team. But they, but I was disappointed because my school, where I was working at the time, didn't recruit my son. So, so Tony, I appreciate you bringing it up, but I think we need to go after, we may not get them, but at least we, we might get some. But I think we need to go after these highly talented students who accomplished right there. And my sons were being taught by Southern University professors in AP classes, right there in engineering, right at Stocktonville. But nobody reached out to them, nobody, nobody did. And I know I'm preaching now, but Reverend Blake is still here. I remember you gave a speech at Southern University some years ago. I never, never forgot it. It was powerful. I, I think, I don't know if you said we seek through the glass darkly, something to that effect. But I think we really need to reach out. And a couple of deans have complained to me, "We're not getting the students we used to get." I said, "Mr. Dean, what are we doing to go out and get these young people?" I think we're gonna have to make an extra effort to try to get these highly talented students, accomplished students right in our backyard that we are not making enough, at least from our perspective. If we doing more than I, I see then, I stand corrected.
I will, I will assure you that we are gonna take another look at that. Clearly, you know, institutions have the wherewithal to acquire, you know, database that represent graduates from institutions across the state. It's not uncommon for institutions, for example, to get graduation lists from, from those students who have just graduated. We just need to take another look at it and see how we could improve the degree to which we reach out to students and actively court them to come to Southern University. I can tell you that this year, that we did, we were deliberate in funding more resources for scholarships to attract more high-forming students to the university. And as a result of that, I think we have some very high yields in terms of, in terms of where we were this, last year in comparison to this year. And, and, and right into our campus, you know, students with ACTs, ACT scores over and beyond 28. So, but much work has to be done, and you have our commitment that we will take that.
I want to recognize another board member. Let me make this comment in trying to understand what I hear. We shouldn't wait until someone is senior, graduate, senior, before trying to establish their viability to come to Southern. If you listen to what, carefully what Mr. Clayton said, the son of our esteemed board member, Mr. Ruttles, who is only a juvenile school, it seems to me that we ought to be tracking the performance for our students in this state. Since all of it is done by data sources, we access the information early, analyze it early, and get out early letters, which can be encouraging for that purpose. So let's ratchet it up to the point where we stock early at taking a look at those students. Because we're competition to the world now for our students. They have, one of the comments is, we always bad news about people not getting to Southern. I have three children who all graduated from Southern University, like their father and mother. Mr. Duncan?
Yes, so, I just wanted to add that I know it's been a constant issue where I've been contacted by alumni federations and things of that nature when it comes to having a database and knowing who their students are and tracking them so that they can even do things like award them scholarship money. You know, so I've been engaged, you know, everyone knows I was gone this summer, and I engaged with the DMV chapter, and that was a concern, and even back at home, just really, once again, making sure we close that gap so that we're recruiting and getting everyone engaged early on, and once they get your monitoring, they're having some system so that they can access that information.
Reverend Gann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Alum and I can appreciate the discussion, and I think it's something that we need to be doing, which we're going to have to do. But at the same time, while we're talking about engaging students, I want to remind us to let us not forget our mission. And I think perhaps we, we have gone to do that. We've allowed some other people to fail without mission use. And our mission really was to reach those that no one else wanted. And I think by not doing that, we are missing, and I know he doesn't mind me using, had vicious college not open his doors to Harry Blake, who been hard to read, we wouldn't have the man, the icon standing at that podium today that we have, that they realize their mission. And I think, Mr. President, somewhere you need to get a task. We need to look at our reason for being. We talked about some months ago, Tony, about going for the state and letting know we were not created to be an immediate school. We were created to open our doors, and we know many of our young people are where they are today because HBCUs gave them an opportunity that no one else did. But I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of what I'm looking at.
Mr. President?
Yes, and, and your, your comments, Reverend Gann, resonate with me mightily. You should know that the action of this board at the last board meeting where we adopted a conditional permissions policy provides us with a, with this, with a pathway to again attract students who we have traditionally served at, at Southern University. And so we do anticipate having the opportunity going forth to fulfill, you know, that, that mandate that we have historically embraced. I just wanted to make another point because I want to recognize alums who have really stood up for, for Southern this year. I speak of many who have advanced the Top Jags initiative, where they have in fact surveyed and sent letters across the state. And we're developing strategies where we begin to do so nationally in trying to identify students and indeed providing resources to them to come to Southern University. So I think we're, we're looking at this in- So, uh, I think we're, we're looking at this in, in a parallel way, uh, both, uh, uh, from the standpoint of trying to develop strategies to attract, uh, uh, high-performance students to the university as well as, uh, identifying individuals who's just on the coast, who we think we could touch and indeed, uh, provide them with opportunities for student success. So, uh, I, I really appreciate your comments. We're, we're definitely going to continue to examine best practices such that we could, you know, fulfill our promise to students.
And, Mr. President, the comment is not lost on me by Dr. Davis about FAMU being able to go around the country and provide all these scholarships, we didn't mention was the fact that the state of, um, Florida provided an additional million dollars a year to FAMU for the president to be able to do just that. Louisiana has never done that. So, we could quickly with a million dollars, I'm sure you go around this country and do a lot of things. Something's named about us, Reverend. I'm Dr. Davis.
That million dollars did help, but he had to lobby for that million.
Yeah, he did, the rest, and the rest of the universities in the state got it too. So, what, if they would just single out, maybe we should do a better job of lobbying from the state of Louisiana so we can get money targeted at that. Uh, one other comment, uh, Mr. Fundel.
One more thing I do want to bring up, and, um, we have a certain group of folks that are perhaps in this room or back in our community, back in the Baton Rouge area. And I had a conversation with the, with the president and Dr. Young with regards to, you know, a call to action. We have a certain group of individuals who are retired educators in our community. And they want to give back, but many times they may not know how to go about doing it. And the conversation we had was that we could have one hundred retired educators from the area of Baton Rouge that can, that can come and, they can assist our incoming freshmen. We know we have a freshman training academy. And I want us to be able to get them to come in to assist us as all volunteers to assist these young folks that are coming in. And as many of us know, the first couple of semesters in college are the toughest. You know that, it is the toughest. And just to be able to have somebody that's there to just give you a hand, to help you with a simple problem that you may have, and they're not asking of anything, this university has given a lot of us a lot. Um, I had a conversation last night with the chair lady and Mr. and, uh, Dr. Davis and his wife.
We love you.
Okay, well, I, I would like to see Dr. Davis be a bachelor. And the reason why Dr. Davis recently retired from the Southern university system, all right? He can be the face of this. He can be that person that stands out there and says, you know what? Come here, I'm just from here. And I know him and his wife, I couldn't even get it out, but Mr. Smith was there. He was like, okay, let's do it, let's do it. So, I would hope that we can follow up on this in time. I say it now, because time is of the essence with the semester starting. We wait until the next week, we will have been halfway through, at least a third of the way through the semester. So, if you would, you know, just kind of elaborate on it just a little.
Well, yes, uh, Dr. Young and I spoke about it, and we, we both agree that it's an excellent idea to the teachers, the alums, the mentors, uh, uh, to, to work with us. We believe that the freshman, freshman academy, uh, is, uh, uh, is that space that would enable that kind of interaction to take place. Uh, we are, uh, we want to be a little bit more restrictive going forth in terms of what we would be asking, uh, the alums, uh, to do. And so, that's what we're working on now. But certainly, uh, uh, we feel that it would certainly benefit, uh, our students to kind of have that kind of exposure and engagement, uh, with these volunteers.
Basically, it would accomplish four hours a month, four hours a month, five a day, Monday, uh, Monday through Friday, four different groups that will come in, and five people a day will come in and assist with it. So, that's something we can talk about more, but, um, you know, I think Dr. Davis would be, and so, not to take away from anybody else that is here, because I know we have other retired educators here, but, uh, he's recently retired and I think he'd be good.
Thank you, Mr. Fundel.
Yes, I would like to further allude to, uh, Mr. Fundel's comments and Dr. Belton. I would like to do a shout-out for the home chapter for, uh, Baton Rouge area. That's Ms. Prior and this, uh, and her chapter. They have already started to reach out and alone, this week, they came in and they brought twenty-five or more alums. And they actually assisted our, our students, our beginning students, to move in and to serve them, uh, food, water, and what have you. And, and that was a great reach-out, in my opinion, and I'm hoping that out of that, other things will come. They were not the only chapter, but they were the one that came in uniform, and, and they were the ones that made a, a splash. So, uh, we would just like to thank all of the alums who came out and shared and, and assisted the new students this week. Thank you, Dr. Torga.
Thank you very much. If you have any other comments, uh, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Torga. And now we will have Facilities and Property Committee. Uh, at this time, uh, will you, Dr. Davis?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fundel.
Be in charge.
Uh, the Facilities and Property Committee is called to order, Mr. President, Roll Call.
Yes. Reverend Henry, Dr. Whitfield, Mr. Fundel. Dr. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Duncan. Mr. Higgin. Dr. Torga. Mrs. Smith. You have a call, sir.
Thank you. We're now on item three, adoption of the agenda. We have a motion. Okay, all in favor? Okay, next, item four, public comments. Is anyone that wishes to make a public comment on items on this agenda? I see none. Then, uh, action item, well, information on item five, uh, priority projects update by campuses. Mr. President, who you?
Yes, I'm gonna ask Mr. McClintock would lead the discussion on this, um, on this informational item.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we have the, uh, prior to project update, uh, document in, in, in your board packet. Um, there are no major changes, uh, since the last time we submitted it, but we are progressing, um, as usual. In fact, all the, uh, target dates that we have, there are no changes on the particular dates. If you need anything, you know, in detail, we can address that.
Ask a question?
Uh, I know that we have roofing projects in, uh, in progress. Can you give me an update on that, please?
Okay, which one, uh?
That's what I'm asking you, which ones have we done?
Roofing projects, I'm sorry. I would like to ask Mr. Gill if it would come up for you, so he has more detail on these items, if you don't mind, if I have a chance.
Madam Chairlady, uh, in terms of the status of the roofing projects, we are making tremendous amount of progress. Just as of yesterday, bids have, uh, come in, in particular the WW Street Hall Roof, um, project. And we had approximately about, uh, twelve bidders. Um, the low bidder is, uh, within the budget, um, that was, uh, assigned for the project. Um, along with, uh, the other projects that we have pertaining to the New Orleans campus, uh, is, uh, they are making progress with signing the contracts to proceed with, uh, rerouting, along with the emergency projects. The New Orleans, uh, the Baton Rouge campus is the same, and the Shreveport campus, uh, we're in the process of proceeding with, uh, contracts to, uh, proceed with the roofing projects. Um, I, I would, I will, um, add in particular pertaining to the last board meeting, that's not, uh, the package, it's pertaining to the fire marshal issues for the Baton Rouge campus. Um, we, along with, um, Mr. Ben Pugh and the Fire Marshal, uh, Director, Mr. Robert Neeson, is proceeding diligently to correcting, uh, fire extinguishers of the three thousand, three hundred fire extinguishers we had issues with. Fifty percent have been completed. We're looking at, uh, completing the remaining fifty percent in September. Uh, exit lights are being repaired, uh, emergency generator, with emergency lights, uh, fire alarm systems and sprinkler inspections. And, uh, we only have one elevator that's, uh, that's down at one particular building, but it does have two. So, I'm just adding, uh, the fire marshal issues concerned. But overall, for the systems level, uh, roofing is taking place.
Are there other, other questions?
Yes, thank you, Jim. Other things, um, the repairs that are being made to sidewalks in front of the gym of Baton Rouge campus?
Yes, sir.
The town.
Um, that's.
Because that means it's crazy to me to be in the middle of registration and the kids got to climb through mud. That doesn't make any sense. Now, so I, who, 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 who handles that?
That's, uh, that would fall under, uh, Title III.
I mean, on campus.
On campus, that would, uh, come through the Vice Chancellor, Mr. Ben Pugh's, uh, operation, his staff.
Mr. Pugh, is Mr. Pugh here?
Yes, sir.
Come in, Mr. Pugh. That's what I know. And Mr. Pugh, first of all, you needed to run him off because he throwing something on you. I thought he was the facilities person. But then, and, and if I were you, his supervisor, I'd run him over here with two buses. But the point of it is amazing, uh, Mr. Pugh. I'm sure this has some long-range plan, but could we not have put it all for? Because when I looked at, and looked at, it's crazy. Name eight of these kids gonna have to go to that building, am I right?
Absolutely.
Come on, help me out.
So, I, I plan on bringing it up, because I thought about that the other day. Uh, it's bad timing, and I think it's a little senseless because they doing both sides at the same time. So, the only alternative I can think of is if they block the strip off and open it up to where people can walk back and forth because everyone knows you have to walk down the strip to go to class, like you have to. That's where mainly all the classes are. I, I have to go to T C L A from the union, how am I gonna get there? So, I take the long way around. So, it's a good idea. I, I appreciate the fact that we're addressing the issue as long as we've been discussing it, but it's the way it's being handled and the timing, I think, is where we can do better.
Uh, yes, I agree that, uh, the timing is a little off, but I do want to share with the board that we have been planning this activity for more than a year. And we got through all of the hoops, the B R project and everything. And the President, Chancellor indicated that we needed to move forth as quickly as possible.
Come on. Well, you would let me jump on his side.
But, but it indicates, sir, uh, there's no good time for that type of work. And we realized that it did impact registration. Uh, however, we do plan on providing shelter services and whatever we need to do to make it accommodated for our faculty and our students. But there's no good time for that type of work. And, uh, we felt that moving forward as quickly as possible would be the best thing for the university. And so, we're gonna be planning some other, uh, activities utilizing. And then the other thing I want to share with you also is the fact that the source of funding for this was child-free money and that the deadline for expending those funds, so that was, we were up against that also. So, that impacted the timing for us producing this particular proj- project.
But then the other side of it, Mr. Pugh, even if you want to do it, why ain't the devil tied for hundred percent? You still could not tell me that there could not be a pathway. We, in, in Shreveport now, there's construction all over this city now. But it, but, but what's happening was still, uh, I know I was impacted in one of my bills on Hollywood. But you know, I demand you got to leave me a paid area in order to egress my place. So, that's what I'm saying, even if it were, and I'm talking president now, since he be, I'm looking at the door. Mr. President, uh, let's be factual. The students are our customers. If we don't accommodate them, that's one of our biggest things now, poor customer service. And even if we had to go forward with it, I think there should have been some accommodations made for these. It's raining in Baton Rouge every day.
That's the problem.
And they, but, but no, that's not the problem. The problem is you didn't, you didn't make arrangements for that, to know there should have been something made, you know? And we, we have students with handicap. How do I go through the mud in wheelchairs and get into the building? So, I think you need to go back on to date and find some kind of temporary fix that they get it, because, that they get in. We're talking about a show. The show ain't the problem. The problem, when you get into registration next week, it's gonna be walking in there. The show is not gonna work, and we know it's not gonna work, so don't give it out. We need to fix it, and it need to be fixed between the date and something be done, running for those students to get in.
Yeah, we could work with the contractors to see if they can.
Listen, we'll get back to the contractors, and we also have a, a group of people who are looking at ways to assist the students during this, uh, period. So, I'll also contact that committee also.
And while I have a call, Mr. Chairman, let me finish, and I know. Uh, when will the Amfons Jackson building be, you, thank you, Mr. Pugh. I want to get back on, Mr. Eli. When will, we, we, we dedicated the building and everything last night. When will this building be available for usage?
I, um, I've been, we've been working closely with, um, Facilities Plan and Control. Um, they have a new project manager for that particular facility. Um, funding has become available in approximately about, uh, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to purchase furniture. Um, the S U S L, uh, assigned members have been working closely with F P and C and the interior designer to select the furniture. And upon that, there are a punchless items that's being addressed. And the building is substantially completed with the fact that we have, uh, punchless items and, uh, furniture that would be, uh, ordered. And those remaining dollars were based on the construction, and if you had any change on it, so whatever dollars remain in the budget, that will go towards the furniture. Uh, in speaking with, uh, F P and C on, uh, Wednesday, you know, we're hoping for possibility of, uh, November.
November?
Yes, sir.
Okay, another thing, I'm just gonna make a statement on that, and I don't know who made the call on that. The building is beautiful, but when I saw those white walls in there, I said, how long they gonna be white? And I don't know who made those decisions, and maybe it's a thing, but it is beautiful now, Mr. President. But then, you know, when you, all, but all those walls were white. And we know when we go to the building, what's gonna happen, and I don't know who made that decision. Mr. Chancellor, you gonna have to be having walls painted in the semester. But I mean, it's just something that, you know, I just thread, Reverend, as to, of course, the Allen Building. What, what's the deal on it downtown?
Um, the Allen Building, uh, is under renovations, uh, because it's the existing building running to unforeseen conditions that slows the schedule of completing the building. So, a combination of uncovering and realizing that, uh, you don't have any asphalt roads on the building, so you're running to complications. Um, the timeframe is on schedule for November seventh, two thousand seventeen, and, but.
So, again, in November?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Chancellor, I want to suggest, if we do anything else in Shreveport, stop spending money downtown, let's finish developing this campus here. We had two old, dilapidated buildings, we spent a whole lot of money on downtown, from my perspective. And just as, uh, uh, stated, and you getting these old buildings, we buying building somebody out on these buildings. And we getting these old buildings, and, 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 and I'm concerned, we, we don't use foresight. We got a building on campus right now, we built it, we couldn't do anything with it. And we have to end up using it for another purpose. I think we need to sit down and, 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 and have more foresight. Now, the last one, Six Ten Texas Street, is the work completed there?
Uh, no, sir.
Was it, what?
The Metro, uh, seven?
Yeah, yeah, that's Six Ten Texas, Metro seven.
Yes, Metro seven.
I don't look at me like you know, Dr. Come on, huh?
Okay.
And I'm at home today, so I'm in November. I, I'm ten minutes from my house, so I plan to talk a long time today.
Uh, the floor repair work has been completed. Uh, and based on funding that we have, that, that work has been completed.
What about the roof? I'm saying, I'm saying, you helped me make it wrong. We, Chancellor, you jump in and hit me. What we having some problems still with roofing and molding and building, am I just hearing something in my dreams?
Now, unaware of any roof issues at the Metro. We have had some H B A C issues that has caused.
Leaking, well, that may, that's what I'm, that's what, okay.
And so we have, I know I signed the, uh, purchase order, uh, actually a couple of weeks ago to put all new units in. And so we, I think it's probably about thirty, uh, units that we're putting in, individual units that will help to alleviate that. In addition, I think there are about five or six that just need to be repaired.
When you say individual units?
I'm not an H B A C guy.
Mr. Eli, we got Mr. Eli, that's where he helped, we'll put it on him. He's a facilitist, man, he ought, what is that?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, condensation issues with the units that has to, uh, have.
But I mean, when you say individual units, help me out. What are, what are we saying?
Air handling units that's in the building, so each.
So when I'm talking little units, you talking big units?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because you said that, I thought we were gonna have no air conditioning hanging at the windows downtown. Okay. I'm gonna hurt, thank you.
Have you finished, Mr. Jim?
I'm sorry, finish, I'm gonna stop.
Well, we're in your house.
Yeah, I'm gonna stop right there.
We're guests in your house.
I'm gonna stop right there. Cause I like your wife and I, I don't want her to tell me, I don't, I don't regret you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jim.
Chancellor, how many students do you have downtown?
Wow, um, the downtown campus housing, the majority of our, um, allied health students. If, I did not know exactly, I'm approximating, so I think about three hundred students. Uh, if I'm wrong, I believe are these. If I had to guess, about three hundred students.
Thank you. That's a good one. Okay, there other, other comments, questions? If not, then thank you, Mr. Gilroy, I thank you after I sit for a minute. Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
Uh, action item, I'm sorry. Item six, other business, do they need other business to come before this committee? See none? Emotion for John?
Motion.
Y'all are thinking? Where's John?
Thank you, Dr. Davis, for administering, uh, the cell of consent party. Now we will have athletics committee and his attorney Clayton. Father.
Oh, you asked, I apologize, I wasn't marking the one I told. I thought it was, obviously it's financing, sorry. Uh, Mr. President, uh, would like to call in all of the athletes to me, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Attorney Gray?
Here.
Mr. Findell?
Here.
Mr. Henry, Reverend Henry, Attorney McGee, Attorney Rutledge?
Here.
Mrs. Small, Mrs. Smith.
Press.
Madam Chair, can I ask that you respectfully appoint Mr. Dr. Davis to the committee so that we can have a vote?
We do have a vote.
Do we?
Yes. Now, for, you have Clayton, Findell, um, Rutledge and Ann Smith, that's four, seven on the committee.
Apologies. Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Sorry, I couldn't get you on this committee, Dr. Davis.
Appreciate you, brother.
Moving second, all in favor. Uh, the agenda has been adopted. Any public comments or any, to manage any matter pertaining, uh, on this agenda? Seeing no one approach the microphone, I'll now move to action item five. Uh, request approval of employment contract for the head baseball coach. Uh, before we do that, Madam Chair, respectfully ask that, I think the A D is here. Can you come up and introduce us to your new baseball coach before we vote on his contract? You can come up now, Mr. Baseball Coach.
Morning. Morning, Madam Chair. Dr. Belton, if you will, uh, for a minute, allow me before I bring up this gentleman, uh, that I wanted to, uh, give the board a token. We know that we're going into football season and I met with Dr. Belton and the Chair of this Board, the Chair of Athletic Committee. And, uh, we know that we have a lot of challenges with safety, uh, uh, across the country now. And, uh, I've been meeting with, uh, uh, state police and security teams for all football events. And so I wanted to make it a little easier. They're gonna be stopping and, and we are expanding, uh, the free zone, uh, from the stadium. So hopefully that, uh, when you come in front of the nursing center, there's more walking space instead of cars driving, unless they just have to get to reserve parking area and come to the fieldhouse. And so my gift to the board is to make sure that you all recognize and if they stopped anything, that I don't have to be around and no one from athletic staff. And the problem in the past is that you just had a all assets pass. But, um, we stepped it up a notch and I want to make sure so you can move around, uh, like you can and like you should as a board member. And, uh, we brought your new token here with your pictures on your all assets passes. So I like to leave this with you all so to make sure that you have as we give up, uh, for the first weekend in September to make sure, uh, that we have a good game day experience for everyone. And so that's a token from us to make sure that we stepped it up a little bit, uh, the next time we go.
Make, make sure we can't use the passes until I show up or not, since you got our picture on.
Yeah, we're trying to make sure that, uh, we don't have too many people on the field, it's not supposed to be that. But, uh, uh, I wanted to say this is that, uh, I had a conversation, uh, with a board member here, uh, without calling his name, that gave me a lot of pleasure of having him because I think he has known me for a long period of time. Most of you have, but, uh, from Shreveport days, at least know way back to my father days. And, uh, and I was sitting there and I was, uh, you know, it's happened been right on a year since my dad passed. And he would say, uh, listen here, young boy. And, uh, even though I'm a little bigger than him, he would say, little boy, you don't have all the answers. And stop and listen to some older people because they been where you trying to go. And, um, I said that to say that I was, that you gave me the pleasure service, the interim athletic director for two years. And, um, I think this is going into a little under five months as the athletic director, total responsibility. But I will say to, to those, uh, as interim athletic director and basketball coach, I was just that, just trying to make things stability wise. But I would sit here and be the first to admit is that, uh, as Southern University is managed to, uh, to really do the job the right way that you can't do both. And, uh, I want to say that even when you think you're young and you have a lot of energy, sometimes we all need to stop and listen to the ones that's been before you. And trying to do all of that without killing myself and keep a family together at home, it's almost impossible. So those of you that's been guiding me, I just pause to say that I'm thankful for the opportunity to be your athletic director. But I'm also thankful for the wisdom that you've put inside of me to make this young fellow sit down, stop, so he can do the rare best that this university reserves. With that being said, my first major hiring, uh, was a challenge. And being a, coming from a coaching pedigree, is that my focus is winning. And not just winning games, but being the best we can be for our student athletes, graduation rate. And also representing ourselves well to help recruit students to the university. And as this baseball job, uh, was a challenge to hire a person, there were many people, uh, persons that applied for the job that could coach baseball. But when you start talking about mentoring and taking care of a program, then you're just not looking for a coach, you're looking for a leader. And I said that we was gonna take our time, but we was gonna work very aggressively. And I'm pleased today, uh, that we chosen a person that we feel like have great integrity. And we know that we have problems, uh, in the area of our, uh, baseball department. But feel that he's N C A knowledgeable. And he also had the coaching tools to move our program to, to the direction that it needs to go in and to greater heights. So with that being said, I thank you all for your patience and I thank you for your support and allowing me, uh, to go through a process and pick the very best guy, uh, that I think can get the job, get the job done. Without further ado, I'd like to be all there, help me welcome, uh, the next baseball coach. Uh, Coach K. Law is here over thirty years. I don't know if his tenure be that long, uh, but welcome the next baseball coach, uh, uh, to lead Southern to its newest level, and that's, uh, Coach K. Jackson.
Thank you, Coach Bakes. Um, first of all, I'd like to say, uh, thank you to the committee, uh, Madam Chair and the board members for allowing me to have this opportunity to take this program, uh, and put it, uh, in the national spotlight because that's my goal. Uh, I, I want to, Coach Bakes, I went through this process, the one thing that told me was, I wanted to elevate the program and not just be known specifically as an H B C U baseball program, but as a baseball program in general. So when people speak of Southern baseball, they're gonna speak about it in the national terms. And I think that's gonna be something where putting you all in a position where you're gonna be proud of what it is that we represent and how we go out and what are you gonna do on a daily basis, not just on the field, but off the field. And I promise you that with here, within the next four to five months, you will hear about the positive things that our program is doing and this is gonna be well before our season even starts. And so that will just kind of be the introduction to what you'll see from us in the future room before.
Thank you, Mr. A D. And, uh, hopefully we give these votes that you might be our coach, we'll see now. I'll entertain a motion to put.
I see that, uh, we just received a copy of the, uh, hard, um, copy of the contract. So, uh, I also wanted to ask you if you were, if you felt we needed that session or if we did not.
I don't think we need that session. We've had the, uh, contract before, the A D has spoken to us as to the, uh, the details of this contract, Madam Chair. And as the Chair of Athletics, I recommend you allow the board to vote, um, it's approved.
Okay.
Next, entertain a motion?
Yes, I'd like. I, I'd like to make a motion that, um, that we vote on Coach K. Jackson to be the next baseball coach of Southern University, at Southern University.
Properly moved and second, all in favor. I'm trying to prove that this is, this, graduation at this point.
Uh, Mr. Chair, you gotta make a statement.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say to both our athletic director and to Coach Jackson, uh, I watched most of your interviews during the, um, time that you were presenting him. And I, I'm very sure Dr. Tarver was extremely proud of you because he likes every dot, every I dotted, every T crossed, and your, um, interviews were excellent. Again, thank you and I look forward to you representing Southern University well. Thank you.
Um, recognize Dr. Tarver.
Thank you very much, Your Honor, Chair.
I wanted to say to both of them.
Speak directly in the mic, please.
Yours, mine, here we go. Sorry. I wanted to say to both of the young men who just spoke, our new baseball, uh, coach, I followed, uh, as much as the T V would always allow, those interviews, I thought they were very outstanding. Uh, from all appearances, you bring the kind of, you are the kind of personality and you bring the kind of character, uh, that should make this an exemplary, uh, program. And I hope it spreads to the rest throughout our coaching ranks. And I want to say to, uh, Mr. Bakes, I thought it was a very profound and very mature, uh, observation and narrative you shared with us. Uh, to see you grow and, and take the helm of leadership that you have is gonna be awfully important for the future, not just of the athletic department, but once again, by example, uh, be able to illustrate that to the rest of our staffs outside of athletics, that it is important to keep the university first. And that means putting our students first. And as long as you're able to do that, we'll fulfill our mission. And very proud of both of you and thank you for the solid journey.
Recognize Dr. Davis. Thank you, uh, Coach Jackson, uh, you, you coached at Missouri. Uh, were you under, uh, Dr. Brady?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was my good friend. Uh, we went back to graduate school, not at the same school, we came out the same year, we were friends over years and he would try to recruit me four times to Missouri. Had I known usually I might have come. But anyway, congratulations to you.
Thank you, very much.
Mr. Chair. I recognize that, Mr. Rob.
And this is not necessarily, I, I just ask that in the future. I am, okay, there he is, I wasn't on, I'm sorry. I just ask in the future that if I'm gonna be asked to vote on a contract, I'd like to have an opportunity to read it. And the next time I'm given a contract, a minute before I'm asked to vote, I'm gonna vote no. I don't think it's unreasonable that we be giving this documentation. I don't necessarily think there are any issues with this document. But if I'm gonna vote on it, I wanna have it in advance and at least have an opportunity to read it and understand what's in it. But I offer my congratulations to you, Coach, that's not directed to you, you didn't have anything to do with it, so.
I'm gonna be like, Mr. Gilroy, I'm gonna take blame for it right now, but I'm gonna ask you, Mr. A D, take some heat for this request because I think he's right later on. But I'll take the blame, Mr. Rob, we apologize for giving this to the top board at this late point. But, uh, I think they're eaten, I'll, I'll deliver it to the A D later on.
Here.
Okay. Mr. Tracy?
Uh, I, I think there was just some, um, problem with the book. It is in the book already, but they did not label it the Athletic Committee. So it was in the book, but it wasn't properly labeled. So people probably overlooked it. So when I came in this morning, I just went on and printed out a copy because I didn't think it was in there. But we found it, we found it after, um, we passed it out. So it was, it is in the packet, but the Athletic Committee label was not on the, um, in the book.
So is it in the packet that was emailed to us, probably?
I would assume so, yes, because it is in the hard copy.
All right, look, I agree with Mr. Rob, I think the same issue is about to come up in finance with the budget. He's right. If it, we should have had these things way ahead of time, so there's no excuse for that. And, uh, I respect the gentleman from Bad News Campus. Thank you, gentlemen. If that's okay with the board, I would now move to item, I'm sorry, we're going already. Action item B, C and D in global, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Been properly moved by Mr. Raymond Findell, the gentleman from Lake Charles, and seconded by Dr. Tarver, the gentleman from somewhere between Unison and Shreveport.
Can I, Mr. Clinton, can I ask a question about the, uh, now, there is also on finance, a request approval of these operating budgets also. Uh, what's, is there, Mr. Clinton, is there a difference? What's, so do we need to act upon them in both committees?
Right, normally we would act upon them, normally be active on the finance. Right, normally, we would act upon them, normally be active on the finance, I mean, how can we extend finance, because of course, each committee should give approval of the budget, so it should appear on both committees, I mean, agendas. Now, they are the same, Mr. Robinson.
Okay, I thought so. Well, I'm gonna, Mr. Banks, to come back up here, because this will say we have to ask this question in finance on the Athletic Department's budget for S U B R. I don't see under your, under your revenues, Mr. Athletic Director, on page three, you anticipate a projected total revenue of a little north of nine million dollars. But in these projections, and I did not see in any of the supporting documentation, other than some licensing revenue, I don't see any sponsorship dollars included in this projection. Am I misreading that?
There's, there's always.
Can you show him the page, Mr. Clinton, on reference? It would be page three.
Our sponsorship, most of our sponsorship dollars are stored into the foundation.
Oh, I understand, I understand, I understand that, but it seems to me that you should project in the total revenue that you're gonna operate for. For example, is my understanding that the Athletic Director subsidy at the bottom there, is derived from some sponsorship dollars, is that right?
Yes, sir.
But clearly, you're generating more than sixty thousand dollars in sponsorship dollars annually, right?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Those dollars are used, and we use far better those dollars to do other things that the budget don't allow us to do. And so, to be honest with you, the budget that you have, our way of speaking supersedes that, so our sponsorship dollars and going by doing other things for the Athletic Department allows us to kind of fill in the gaps where we don't have.
I understand that, I understand that clearly, and I get that, and that's, I think, but again, if the board is to have, and as Chair of Finance, if the board is to have an accurate picture or understanding of what your revenues and expenditures are, this does not provide that. That's only a point that I wanna make. I think, and in the future, I'd like to see, because I think it's very important that we see and track and understand what those sponsorship dollars look like, because ideally, they should be increasing annually. Because if you look at this budget, Mr. Banks, fifty-six percent of it is dependent on either a student fee or a general fund contribution.
Yes, sir.
Now, most people think that our department, Athletic Department, is self-sustaining. That's not accurate.
No, it's not.
Fifty-six percent of it is dependent on a student fee or a contribution from S U B R's general fund.
Most campuses the size of power five or the top ten programs are dependent, their dollars basically come from tuition, student fees, and also, it also comes from general fund, okay?
And so, that, so, and again, those dollars are fleeting, all right? And I know the students have taken on their lion's share of responsibilities to try to keep these contributions at a, at a level that benefits the department, but again, to the extent that we don't have access to those, to that kind of revenue, it makes it increasingly important for us to leverage our brand to attract those sponsorship dollars. And I just wanna know what they look like, and right now, I can't tell. My next question is, is my understanding that the N C two A provided us with a grant of nine hundred thousand, or was it?
Nine hundred thousand over three years. We just got the academic accelerated grant.
Okay.
And so that's three hundred thousand a year.
And I don't, where is that in the, in the revenue here, in this, in this budget that you presented?
I don't think that, that's a grant, that wouldn't be into our revenue. That is, that is money that is tracked a different way, so that won't show up in any of our revenue, because that's not revenue for us. That's accelerated grant that we will have to, out before he'll take over, the expenses on the university side. So that's not even revenue, I don't think that our accounting practice tracks a grant in our revenue.
Well, it should, because it is revenue. Oh, it is revenue, there's no, there's no question about that. Now, I said, let me stop there, let me defer to Mr. Clinton, because if you look at any other budget that's presented on the Baton Rouge campus, it clearly demonstrates in the revenue projection, any dollars that we gain, grant dollars, the like. And again, all I'm saying is, this does not, this is not an accurate depiction of the revenue that you generate on an annual basis. And in the future, I would like to see a more detailed budget, I'd like to see any and all revenue to include grant dollars, and I really am interested to know how we are attracting sponsorship dollars, because that is so very important, and it's been a challenge for the department for a long time.
And about sponsorship dollars there, I think that we have the accounting practice from the foundation, which we can fill our records, because our sponsorship dollars go there, so I think that we can add that easily.
Yes.
Any credit and dividends. But also, sponsorship dollars for us were varied each year, so they would go down, we have some that has a two-year contract, some a one-year contract, just different college sponsors. But let me remind you, and I think that we're all on the same page, every time tuition over, fees, and then that requires scholarships for us to go with. And so, there will always be a challenge for us anytime, just in the scholarship area. And so, you start putting scholarships together, time three hundred student athletes, you can see that we really don't come up to that amount, so it puts a lot of pressure on the Athletic Department to try to get the student athletes in that, and, and get the better student athletes in, off the state that other universities are going after.
Final, final question, Mr. Banks, I know in the, in the past, we've had some gender equity issues that have required us to sort of re-prioritize some of our dollars to make sure that we're treating some of those revenue neutral or non-revenue generating sports, particularly those that are, do you believe that this budget gives you the opportunity to continue to satisfactorily address those issues?
I think that budget helps, but the dollars that really help are the dollars in the foundation, our corporate sponsor dollars. I don't think that we have a true budget that helped us in that area, but our corporate sponsor dollars and our donation dollars really help us in that area of making sure that we maintain tight line and actually make sure that we are making it correct to all disability clients as well. Thank you.
Before we leave that, Mr. Clinton, Mr. Robinson's asked a question, made a statement about the grants, should the grants be included in the budget? I think you made some point there, but I think that they're not certain, and do you put them on a budget when you, one, you don't know if you're gonna get them? I think the president called me several months ago and told me that they were working on it, it's not in the balance sheet. But I think you raised an interesting question. Is it something that you, gentlemen, should put in this budget, and if so, why, and if you have it, why not?
Right, it's an item, now, it's an item that we need to place in the budget, because there's an area in the budget that talks about unrestricted, I mean, restricted revenues. And unrestricted revenues is basically grants. Now, what I think we need to do in a case like this, where we are asking for the Athletic Department's budget to be separate, we should show all revenues, and we can do that, we can include the restricted, and we can also include sponsorship, whatever you know, half revenues that we have. But there is a section in the budget that picks up restricted revenues, but it's not broken out the way our revenues is.
All right, I'll recognize Dr. Banks. Okay, Mr. Clinton, I don't know who should answer this, or whether it's Coach Banks or Mr. Clinton. Put on page four, under the month of bill house debt service. The question is, I've seen the number there, but when, when, when do we retire that debt? When, when, when is that debt retired on the month of bill house?
I would need to check it, but I know it's probably around thirty, two thousand thirty.
Two thousand thirty.
Yeah, between two thousand thirty and two thousand thirty-three.
So the debt service includes the interest and the principal?
That is correct.
Okay, so what, what interest rate we're paying, you know?
And recall, I think it's about, it's about five or six, I'm saying.
I was just wondering if that was a refinancable debt, or is that a debt that just fixed, you can't refinance?
Well, as you recall, a few months ago, we came to the board and got your approval to pursue our refinancing of an Millennium project.
All right, okay.
And at that time, you know, we met to a bond commission, and right now, we're waiting to wait on this, because HBCU dollars could be trying to refinance it there.
Mr. Clinton, it's my understanding that.
I'm now recognizing.
Oh, I'm sorry, but it's my understanding that the, that the athletics portion of that had to be removed, that that portion was not refinancable, and I think one of the challenges was to figure out how we separate the two, such that we could, we could posture it.
That, that is correct, Mr. Robinson. There was some talk prior to the HBCU financing, we had worked with the foundation to see could we refinance it. Then we realized that the money from HBCU was, the interest rate was a lot less, so what we were trying to do is separate it, and we did get the approval through the bond commission to do that, but now we're waiting to see, can we, you know, do we know HBCU to approve it and to work with us on that.
Yes, it is, I'm willing to say. We could generate any money from the College Day, because we recommend our kids to stay there, and two, Dr. Tarver and I were talking about this last night, is that twenty-year period, that after twenty years, that that property is sold back to the university at ten-four dollar, some nominal fee?
Right, based on my recollection, when we entered that agreement, now says yes.
Can you check on that and make sure, because I wanna know that. Any other questions came through the budget items? Seeing no one, I now request the motion to approve the items B, C, and D in global. Properly moved by Mr. Fandell, seconded by Dr. Tarver, all in favor. I'm happy that it passed. Now we move on to item six, other business, any other business for the Athletic Committee, seeing no one, now entertain a motion.
For Coach Banks, if you don't mind.
Going back up to the high seat, Dr. Banks.
Coach, with regards to the game day experience, you know, we have a big game that's coming up here, most, I guess most everyone knows, it's gonna be a nationally televised game. What is ESPN two or three? ESPN, ESPN two. ESPN, okay. So we're gonna have a lot of folks on campus, are you having some challenges with regards to security in the, at the gates and stuff? We have kind of outside company that we think that will come in and do a good job, actually L and R Security Company, along with the police, state police, city police, and the other departments that work with us. Chief LeDuck is the coordinator of game day policing, and so we think that we will be great for our, for our game day and expect a large crowd. I think, I don't wanna say it, but obviously, I've been getting a lot of questions, and I think everybody thinks a lot of things come out of front of athletics, but I'm not pushing but on the, just a few, but the question about how we move out of traffic because of E C Harrison, which y'all talked about earlier, that they made the traveling, he's on game day and for terror days. And so, there's a coordination that we need to have to make sure that, that our fans can get, get to where they need to be without experiencing too much drumming as they try to get to their areas. So I think that's always a problem, because we know that our campus has been identified that we only have three ways on and three ways off, and so we are now trying to go to a satellite pickup as well, to take the ease off traffic, communicating with our pier room, Baptist Church, and Grand King David, to perhaps have a, a satellite pickup where our fans can park their cars, and we are talking to cats to transport them on our campus through the back gate, coming through the fields. We think that that would take a lot of pressure off of us as it relates to people coming on campus. Now, also, for the first time, meeting with the Department of Transportation as well, they're gonna be, they're gonna be directing traffic from the interstate. We know that they do this at LSU games, so for the first time, we're able to raise enough sand, so a lot of times, our bag will come because so many people get off their party, and so they're gonna start rewiring, rewiring people from party and making you take other exits and put the pressure off on coming up the street. So we are able to bag off the rental up a little bit, so we can ease the traffic for our patrons coming on campus. On the game day, the first game, will the metal detectors be available, what's, what's going on with that? So we are student affairs, athletics, and Police Department are trying to join ourselves. I think this costs us fifteen thousand dollars apiece. We are actually waiting for the approval of the budget right now, to have metal detectors at our gates for the game. And, and so that would be something that we will have to rush to do on Monday to make sure that they get there. So the effort is that, that the Department, Police Department, for all our events, most of your events are athletic events, and most of your events are student affairs events, concerts and all those things, and to ensure the safety for everyone, we know that this is a big, big item for us, and a lot of game day, college game day, you know, professional rings have been going to that a long time, but that's the best practices right now for college game day. And so we wanna make sure, I think it's in our best interest for safety, that we can get those metal detectors here. You know that we're going to a fullback policy this season. I think it will be a couple of years behind, but we wanna make sure that we wanna put in pressure on our fans, and so we've been advertising that quite a bit, so we can stop different things from coming into the game, and also, once again, the biggest thing, when we come back to it, is safety issues. All right, thank you.
That's Chair.
I know, I was questioned about handicapped and senior citizens within the campus parking, and when I questioned you about it, you already have procedure, process in place. Will you share that with the board, because many senior citizens and handicapped people do not know.
Yes, ma'am, so all limited mobility areas, reserve areas are right there by the stadium where the van practice can be parked a lot. If you're fortunate enough, it would sell out every year, handicapped, limited mobility can go to the ticket office, bring off the decal that they have to get that parked. Now, obviously, each year is up for renewal, so the same people keep renewing. I think the biggest concern, you and I was talking about, were people that's not by reserve and driving up on campus. While limited mobility, parking areas right behind the law center, and we have signs to make sure that they know, go, go to gojacksports.com, we have an area where we talk about it there, and we have limited mobility signs that will be in that area, you go to the ticket office and you get your handout from there. But what we are doing, we have cats participating with us, we have contracted them out to make sure that they're running on a time scale, and that's the reason why we kind of stopped, we're gonna stop a lot of traffic from the nursing school right there and kind of make it a walking area, so we can pick up all limited mobility clients and help them a little bit, as well as we're just part of two limousine cars that we will be riding around and assisting from Athletic Department standpoint, that's way of following back in the campus, or we will have a call center also, where people can call, let's just say, homecoming, and they back our ROTC. Then we will use our limousine service to go pick those persons up, our ROTC building, that perhaps the limited mobility area of parking is cool.
Thank you, what are your point? In my understanding, and I guess in the wake of this Shawville bill incident, tragedy, will you allow these kids on these motorcycles and cars to ride up and down the swan street, like right in front of Valentine Plaza? I think that's a serious, serious, serious major tragedy waiting to happen, so can we block that and not let these folks travel down the school as in motorcycles and cars? So can we block that and not let these folks travel down the schools in motorcycles and cars?
Yes, sir. So I think a couple of years ago, brought it to the board. It was already in our policy, but we just brought attention to it and we are working with our law enforcement to really enforce it. And so obviously those, uh, uh, gas carts basically, uh, the ATVs that we post, you know, they ride around the corner, so those are really not allowed on our campus, uh, on game day. And so we all know that game day, uh, for athletic department starts at five o'clock on Friday and then at one on Sundays. So there's an enforcement that we have to have to stop this practice. Now we know that most of our patrons and season ticket holders are older, so the golf carts are allowed for, uh, because we have a lot of older fans that do come on campus and enjoy their game days and get to where they need to be. Those are allowed, but they are only battery-operated vehicles and you must be a valid driver license person to be driving on campus.
I ask that y'all exercise caution. If you see an elderly person on one of those ATVs, they're not gonna be driving up and down like, I'm talking about those motorcycles and those yachts, period. And I don't want to discriminate against them, but also when we start mixing alcohol and, and, and high-power motorcycles and they send folks' kids running around, that's not a proper dumbo, in my opinion. So anyway, to end this conversation, I, I asked you to look at and study it and, uh, do what's in the best interest of, uh, our fans and our organization. Any other questions?
I just have one.
Dr. Davis and then Mr. Rutherford.
Yeah, uh, I just hope, I, I appreciate what you're trying to do. And I know homecoming, I walk on the campus. Park on the side because all of those kids, it appears that every high school or middle school in Baton Rouge area turn their kids to loose on that campus. Which is, it's a nice thing, but also it's a challenge just to walk. So I don't know what can be done, uh, not trying to exclude them, but I don't know if we can control it or not. But, but I just like to give that, bring that to your attention.
I think one thing for, uh, uh, since my leadership is that I've been having to challenge state police and, uh, security teams and all the law enforcement that work on games. And, uh, uh, I think there's a direct, uh, issue when you look at how they perform their working duties at LSU compared to how they perform our working duties at Southern University. We know a few years ago, we went to four o'clock because of the challenge of we have to have so many police officers and it was basically running us out of business. Uh, we've been able to bounce back a little bit, but we have to have the officers to do their job. So a lot of officers come dressed and they bring their families. So what are we doing? So, uh, I said the status quo, we are banning officers. When I say ban, put a ban on them to identify the ones that are working, alright? And so we will be going around taking inventory because you're not supposed to come to joy terror day with your family and call yourself working our game day experiences. And so, uh, there has been a bullet point for us to look, uh, for people that are working our games to make sure they are doing just that and not taking advantage of us. And so I think that there has been some issues with that and we're trying to clean that up as, uh, we meet with the different departments and our transportation, uh, teams on Monday.
Mr. Rutherford, final, final, uh, final point that I hope to, in your department reported on the good notice that they directed. The, uh, foundation CEO tells me that compared to last year in terms of the sponsorship dollars, you're, you're on track to about a twenty percent increase. So that does demonstrate that you all raised money outside of the revenues that is reflected in this, in this budget. The only point I want to mention is that the revenue, all, all of the revenue ought to be captured in, in the budget.
Mr. Rutherford, any, uh, comments, criticisms, thoughts?
Please buy your season tickets.
Um, so if we properly move this second, all in favor of passing item B, C, and D, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, already done it. Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Sorry, Mr. Rutherford. So, after this, as adjourned, Attorney General.
Thank you, Attorney General. And now we will move the finance committee with, uh, Attorney Rutherford.
I don't know who's working the microphone. Is the microphone on or not? Okay, it's on now. Thank you. We'll, uh, call now the finance committee meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Yes. Governor Rutherford.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Attorney Davis.
Here.
Governor Jack.
Governor Henry.
Dr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Alright, now entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Here none, the ayes have it. Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments, finance committee's agenda? Seeing none. We'll move now to action items. Now, it's my understanding that we traditionally, uh, approved these in, in global. As Chair of the committee, I will take responsibility, members, to the extent that the, the detailed backup that I received, that, that you did not receive, because if you did not, you should have. I did have an opportunity to meet with Mr. McClintock and go over each one of these budgets. Uh, and coming out of that meeting, there are no real major variances between what we're being asked to do this year versus what we did last year.
Taking your own word, Mr. Rutherford, I move that we pass action item five, A to I in global.
Second.
Alright.
No, there's nothing to say.
No, 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 no. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Here none, the ayes have it. Uh, okay. Uh, are there any information lighters, Mr. McClintock? Item six, any information lighters? Uh, we're going to item seven, any other business? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Rutherford.
Thank you, Attorney. And at this time, we will move into personnel report, uh, Personnel Committee and Reverend Gant.
Thank you, Attorney General.
Chair.
Uh, personal affairs committee, nothing on the roll call.
Yes. Attorney D, Governor Jack.
Yes.
Attorney Davis, here. Governor Gaines. Governor Henry. Governor Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Smith. Governor Corrigan.
Thank you. Uh, can I have a motion for agenda three?
So moved.
Thank you.
In discussion, all in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, agenda four, any public comments concerning personal affairs?
Yeah, I would comment.
Yes, sir.
First is public comments.
Public comments.
That's not though, I would call it public.
Well, no, you're not. You're private today.
Here it goes.
Alright, now I'll entertain you.
No, I would do it here. I would, I would do it here. I would do the action five.
Okay. Alright, we're now at, uh, agenda action, aye.
Question before you bring it up.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, a question directed to you. I, I'm looking at and I appreciate that you're taking these interim names off of folks and giving them the, I had the pleasure of seeing a, one of our employees at a restaurant in Baton Rouge this past week, um, and she was interim, I want to say auditor, whatever. And I, I remember voting on her to be an interim auditor years ago. Why do we allow these folks to stay, to have this interim title when they obviously are doing a good job? And why not give them, change that interim and let them assume their duties? And I'm speaking of, I think her last name is Miss Carr, and I, I said, I remember voting on you years ago to be there. You still interim? So are you moving now to take these interim positions off? I think that'd help us with Saks too, right? Dr. Young, if we get rid of these interim?
Yes, sir.
And, and this person, I think, is doing a good job. And I'd just like to see people who are doing a good job do whatever, run through your telecall and give them their title, their due title so that they can get whatever pay that's commensurate with them.
Yes, sir. You're, you're absolutely right. And it's my understanding that that particular employee has, uh, assumed that role for, for years. It's my understanding. We do have a active search. Uh, we, uh, uh, to identify, uh, someone for, for that particular role. The search committee had met and, and asked of me to, uh, they, they want a more substitute pool of candidates. Uh, and so, uh, it, it is, it is my understanding that we should, we should be bringing forth a candidate, uh, pretty soon to this board.
And she would be included in the...
Yes, it's my understanding. Does she not apply for that position?
Yes.
Yes, Dr. Tom.
Yeah, I'm a little disturbed by this process. Uh, to have someone in the interim post for a couple of years, so-called doing a good job, then I hear there's a search and the search doesn't come out very satisfactory, so they want to extend the search. I wonder what the world was looking for? It seems to me we are overlooking someone who is probably very deserving of the job, who by every comment that I've heard has done a wonderful job. And when do we get to a point of making the decision to put someone in their job? Why do we keep, why do we keep these searches going when we're running out of people? And we've got someone right inside the organization? It just seems to me, if you want to send out a positive signal to people in the organization, to have competent people inside the organization who can do the job, that ought to be the number one priority.
And that's piggybacking on what, and I think somebody like her who has done a good job, from what I've heard, why not give the lady the opportunity to do the job? I just think that we ought to honor our own, particularly when they've worked hard in it. But that's all I have to say about that point. My point was well noted by you and I appreciate you nodding as if you, you, you go looking to it. Yes, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, Attorney General.
Alright, going to agenda five, eight. Approve a personnel action position greater than sixty thousand dollars.
Actually, move global five, one through six.
Now, second.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor, all motion carries. Uh, agenda six, other business, any other business?
Yes, sir, Mr. Clay. Since this is under personnel, I want to take the appointed person privilege to, um, to compliment Chancellor Ellis and Shreveport staff. These people are so nice of it. They don't know who the board members, I mean, the police officers, they stop you, you need help. And I'm not hating on the other campuses, but y'all are taking a route. I don't know if you just got on today, but these people are one of the best I've ever seen. And I, I thank you for that. That's what service you're talking about, Mr. Rutherford. But I don't know about you, Attorney General, but I mean, everybody I encountered on this campus spoke to me before I spoke to them. You need help. And I just need to recruit it to everybody. So whatever you're doing, man, you got an awesome staff with you and, uh, you guys keep it up and come help us in Baton Rouge and all other places. I'm sorry, but great job.
That's great.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. You're a true boy. That's...
Yeah, that's a good player.
That's the difference, Mr. Clay. Any, any other, um, any other business? Can I have motion for agenda seven?
Yeah, I will. There will adjourn.
Adjourned.
Thank you, Reverend Gant. And now we are going to pause just for a second and have Dr. Ellis. I believe you have a special guest and you would like to introduce him.
Yes, uh, a lot of you have the pleasure, uh, last evening of attending our grand opening for the Alhance Jackson Junior Building. And, uh, one of the special guests to speak was, uh, his daughter Lydia Jackson. And I'd like to ask her to come up, uh, and just say a few words to, uh, board members and, uh, the, the crowd. Um, she has been truly a blessing to me and I know to, uh, Dr. Belton when he was here and the entire Susler community in supporting us, uh, from, uh, her role at Capital One and as a former legislator, uh, here in Louisiana. So I'd like to just recognize her and give her an opportunity to say some words.
Thank you, Chancellor, Chairwoman. Good to see you again, President Belton. That's a different sound. And to all of you, I was sitting there with my buddy Janice and, uh, listening to the work of the board. And I thought, after a grand and glorious day, how quickly we return to the ordinariness of our business and our world. But I wanted to take this special time to come and say thank you to each of you and to let you know that yesterday was not an ordinary day for our family and in the life of this institution. But it is the work that you do every day and the work of the university that makes games like yesterday possible. Thank you very much. And Chancellor Ellis, I can only say that you're new, but I want to say you've been here long enough to learn how to throw a pretty good putt.
Thank you. And now we are going to move into, uh, Southern University Board Supervisors Regular, uh, meeting for today. And I am ready for a roll call.
Yes. Mrs. Smith.
Present.
Reverend Henry, Mr. Bobatholony, Attorney Clay.
Here.
Dr. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Fundel. Dr. Gaines. Reverend Jack.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Attorney McGee. Mrs. Small. Attorney Rutherford.
Here.
Dr. Tom. Reverend Tom. Uh, Dr. Whitfield. Governor Corrigan.
Thank you. Uh, may I get a motion? We do not. Uh, we need Mr. Fundel to come in. We have to get Mr. Fundel. Here he is. And Attorney Clay, we need you.
Everybody got to be in.
We gotta have you.
Dr. Parker, Mr. Rutherford.
Dr. Tom. Can we get Dr. Tom?
I swear you don't have a knife, so I leave you on court.
Right.
Oh, I should really leave this out there.
We need Dr. Tom, but you see, I was telling...
So I leave you on court.
We gotta have that. It's not gonna take us very many minutes. You've done the biggest work on read. Regular meeting to order. We needed a motion and a second for the adoption of the minutes.
It's been moved second.
It has been moved in second. All in favor, let it be known by all. Any opposition? Nay. Nay. One. Motion carries. Public comments, do we have?
You can't care, Madam Chair. You can't care.
Because you cannot? I just got a motion.
Madam Chair?
One, two, three, four, five?
You were trying to get the agenda, right? No, no, I think, I think she meant the agenda. Well, that's what she asked for. Yeah, but, but?
Adoption of the agenda.
But, but I think it was both.
I, I apologize, adoption of the agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any opposition? Motion carries. A special presentation at this time, do we have Joyce Muntz Pickens? I did ask for public comments. Were there any public comments? No public comments? If none, we will have our special presentation above and beyond. Ms. Joyce Muntz?
Good morning, thank you so much to the board for allowing me to come before you today to acknowledge my colleagues. Integrity, motivation, inspiration, passion, innovation, and patience are all characteristics that are inherent for a leader that goes above and beyond. Harlan Wilson is the epitome of these qualities and so much more. After working in the corporate world for IBM, Professor Wilson found herself returning to her roots here at Southern University at Shreveport as a math faculty member. And as we all know, many people come to Southern University Shreveport unprepared, underprepared, excuse me, in math skills. And I have watched Professor Wilson tirelessly ensure that she leaves no students behind. She can routinely be found in her classroom with one-on-one tutoring during her lunch hours, before work at 7:00 a.m., and even in public libraries on the weekend tutoring students. Uh, remaining true to the personalized experience of an HBCU, Ms. Wilson does not only advise students mathematically, she also provides encouragement, positivity, and even pushes her students to be their greatest self. To take steps, to take things a step further, Ms. Wilson has used her innovation and her passion to create a free math camp that launched this past summer for underprepared students to get them ready for college-level math courses. And if this were not enough to qualify her as a leader that goes above and beyond, when the campus is closing down in the evenings, Professor Wilson's day is just getting started. She goes over to the youth bill program next door and teaches high-stake students basic math skills to help them pass their graduation equivalency test. Reaching students is her main focus, and she stops at nothing to provide the tools that are necessary to give them success. And within the realm of her expertise, Professor Wilson has set the example for her students, and she also sets the bar high for colleagues like myself. By speaking at numerous conferences this past year, she rallied behind the success of her students and advocates for faculty as she serves her second term as Faculty Senate Recording Secretary. She works in leadership positions on quality teams on campus and other committees. And one would wonder if she has anything, any time for anything other than Southern University at Shreveport. But she does, she does. Uh, off-campus she stays just as busy. This past semester, Professor Wilson completed twenty-four credit hours of master-level degree courses and obtained her Leadership Certificate at Central Michigan University. And she continues currently furthering her education at Capella University. Um, thank you so much to the Southern University system, members of the Board of Supervisors, Madam Chairlady Smith, and all others for recognizing my worthy colleague, Professor Harlan Wilson, as she makes it part of her regular routine on a day-to-day basis to go above and beyond for Southern University. Good morning.
Good morning.
I just want to say thank you to the board for selecting me for this award. And I want to thank Dr. Pickens for all those wonderful words she said about me. You know, it's, it's nice to know that people are noticing the things that you're doing at work. Uh, and it's a great feeling to be recognized. Teaching has been one of my greatest rewards, and I take pride in what I do every day. And it is hard for me to believe that I ignored my passion for teaching for around thirteen years. I, I went to corporate America when I finished college. My mother was a teacher. And I just want to tell you this quick little story. I can remember when I was about five or six years old, my mother was taking me to catch the bus. And she asked me that day, she said, "Are you gonna be a teacher?" And I told my mother, "Oh, no, definitely not." I told, I said, "But I think I'm gonna be a model or I'm gonna be a police." And my mother had this real worried look on her face. And I told, I said, "Mom, but don't worry." I said, "Because by this evening, I'm gonna wanna be something else." And little did I know that I would go on to become the teacher that my mother wanted me to be. It has taken me a while to get here, but I can say without a doubt, I'm thankful to have a job that I enjoy going to every day. I'm thankful for my students, I'm thankful for the colleagues that I work with, and I'm thankful for those who really believe in me. Thank you.
The most important thing about going above and beyond is to enjoy your work. And I did hear her say she really enjoys what she does. So thanks again for being a part of Southern University's system. And now we will continue with action items. And at this time, I'm going to ask for minutes to be approved from July twenty-first regular meeting for Board of Supervisors. I think I said that agenda at first instead of minutes, am I correct, Reverend Gann?
I, I move adoption of item six second, Madam Chair.
Okay, it has been moved in second that the minute turned up. Approval of committee?
No, no, no. My vote is against that.
It has been?
No.
Okay.
I'm going nay on that.
Okay. One day, will you make sure that two days?
Can I ask for an explanation?
I don't have to give one.
No, 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 I understand you don't want to give one, but is there an explanation as to why either of you were able to know for the agenda?
Yes, there is.
All right.
But I'm not, I'm not, I won't give, I should have a reason. One day until then.
I understand we have two, and I think Mr. Fundel is indicating he's able to know also, is that right? And do you care to give an explanation?
You're not indicating the minute?
I have no idea what it's about, uh?
I don't know.
Yes.
Okay, um, we have two nays. Motion passes. Majority?
Cannot pass without nine votes.
Okay, that's that amount.
So the minutes will simply not be approved.
Well, we, do we, do we move them to our next meeting?
Yes, they, they would be?
So they'll be on the agenda for the next meeting?
Generally, when the minutes are not approved, it's because a member of the body has a concern with how the minutes were reported from the last meeting. So they would be pushed back to the next meeting, and any necessary revisions would be supplied between now and the next meeting.
Do they, do they have to give, uh, what revisions can be made in the minutes? Can we, can we actually redo the history of the board meeting, of the, of changing history to this legal way?
I, I think, under Robert's rules, generally, if the minutes aren't approved, it's because somebody believes there needs to be changes to make an accurate settlement. Um, the presumption is that between now and the next meeting, whatever's believed to be inaccurate in the minutes would be corrected by the secretary.
Yeah, I also answer that, that if no changes are made, a vote will come on the issue at the next meeting, it still simply needs nine voters to pass. You know, I'm not understanding how many objections.
It's not majority, it has to be nine.
It has to be nine.
Nine. Okay, then maybe I need to back up, Reverend Gann, you said you were confused, um?
Well, no, that wasn't on that point, no ma'am. I'm not confused now at all.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item B, approval of committee reports and recommendations.
Chair, I move, you said the global six, six B, C, D, E?
Second.
It has been moved and second?
I'm sorry, we take a skip.
You mean, you need to include your agenda?
It's, it is.
I thought it was going to be taken off the agenda.
It is. Sure.
I, item six, B, C, and E?
Second.
It has been moved and second that B, C, and D be approved in the global. Um, can I get a motion? It has been moved and second, okay? Any comments? Are you ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Let it be known by all. Any opposition? Motion carries. Uh, the E was deleted. So that should not have been on that all. Are you ready for resolutions?
Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we have two commendations and several condolences. First, the commendations, we offer congratulations are extended to Dr. Eva Brown Fields, retired professor in the College of Agriculture and Family Disumisances on the occasion of her ninetieth birthday on Friday, on Sep., her ninetieth birthday on September second. Congratulations are extended to Mrs. Marver Coleman, a nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy-five graduate of Southern University in New Orleans. August second, twenty seventeen marked her eightieth birthday. Indolences are offered to Dr. Walter Craig Jr. Dr. Craig, a former professor of music and assistant band director at SUVR, and the father and SUVR engineering professor, Walter Craig, who was a music scholar having toured the country as a trumpet player in the Navy Band and is credited with establishing a family fraternity at SUVR. Passed away Wednesday, July twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen. The Ronald F. Mason Senior family, Mr. Ronald F. Mason, a native and resident of New Orleans, Louisiana, and a father, former SU System President Ronald F. Mason Jr. passed away Friday, July twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen. The Clarence Williams family, Mr. Williams, father of Judge Brian C. Williams, who served as executive counsel to former SU President Ronald Mason Jr. passed away Sunday, July thirtieth. The Valina Smith Johnson family, Mrs. Johnson, a member of the SUVR administrative staff who had served in the office of the registrar for more than thirty years, and at the time of her passing, was serving as interim registrar at SUVR, passed away Wednesday, August the second. The Azina Princess Franklin Dixon family, Mrs. Dixon, a graduate of SUVR with both undergraduate and master degrees in special education with a concentration on hearing impairment, and a teacher in the EBR parish schools since for more than thirty years, passed away Thursday, August the third. The Mar, the Mardee, Mardeece Gentry family, Mrs. Gentry, a native of Mansfield, Louisiana, and a resident of Fair Oaks, California, who attended SUVR in the early seventies, passed away Friday, August fourth. Finally, the Lamar Proctor Senior family, Mr. Proctor, father of SUVR librarian Angela Proctor, passed away on Friday, August the eleventh. That could be our resolution, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
I do have a name I'd like to add to the list of condolences. Uh, Attorney Robert Shelter, who was a Charles area pastor this past, uh, Sunday night. So I think that you have this one added also, Robert Shelter. So, I think we have this one added also, Robert Shelter. Shelter, S-A-G-O-T-U-R, Robert Shelter.
Any other? Okay, thank you, sir. We'll move to informational items at this time, and we will start with the system president's report.
Uh, uh, yes, Madam Chair, uh, uh, members of the board, I just have, uh, one announcement, and I'm gonna, uh, further ask Dr. Merrick if she would give you an update on the customer service initiative that we have initiated. Uh, the, in, in form of an announcement, I wanted to just inform and appropriately invite the, the board, uh, to attend the, uh, Governor's press announcement that is being scheduled on Tuesday, August the twenty-eighth, at ten-thirty. As you, uh, recall, the Governor, uh, toured the SUVR campus in order to support in trying to mitigate the erosion issues, the bridge issues that we have, uh, uh, on, on that particular campus. Uh, he has since identified, uh, resources to help repair, and again, mitigate those conditions. And, uh, we are, uh, looking to him, uh, on August the twenty-eighth to formally, uh, make that announcement, uh, at ten-thirty.
Monday, the twenty eighth.
Tuesday, excuse me, Tuesday, August the twenty eighth, at ten-thirty. Dr. Merrick, would you offer just an update on the, on the customer service initiative?
I apologize, Reverend Gann, that should have been the twenty-ninth. I wrote, I wrote that wrong. I'm sorry, it is Tuesday morning.
Okay.
Yeah, it's Tuesday morning, and the, the press announcement, the twenty-ninth. I, either way, everyone, I wrote it wrong. It is the twenty-eighth. It should be Monday, August twenty-eighth. Monday, August the twenty-eighth, at ten-thirty a.m. And we will be doing this, uh, on the roadway area just adjacent to the TTLane Building. Yes, ma'am, my apologies, I, I wrote that wrong.
So, correction is Monday, the twenty-eighth, at ten-thirty on the campus.
We'll probably, uh, meet at the Donald Wade House and have everyone travel over to that spot. Okay? Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board, I'll be happy to give you an update on the customer service initiative that we started on the Backmush Campus, and to let you know that it is moving forward quite well. We're pleased to share with you that we've already completed three of our four mandatory training sessions, uh, that we had in place for the Backmush Campus. We have had nearly seven hundred full-time employees who participated in the trainings. And our training facilitator, Latoya Bullard Franklin, who is the Disney certified trainer that we brought in from Houston, Texas, she's compiling our report that's gonna summarize what we saw in the three trainings. Uh, but the preliminary report that she shared with us so far has revealed that one of the major areas for the university to address is our inter-campus and collegial relationships. That is basically how our employees and offices relate to one another. So, that's something that we learned in that, that whole process. And we learned that it would be important to do a similar training, uh, with our students, uh, primarily our student leaders. So, Mr. Duncan will be working with you, I think we shared with you briefly, that we would want to take this training to our student leaders to have some input from them as well in terms of customer service. So, our perception surveys initially showed us that most of our employees felt that they were valued in the workplace, and the in-person sessions offered us a bit more insight on the inner workings that perhaps we need to tweak that a bit. So, our training's also allowed employees an opportunity to provide some input in our overall planning for the university. So, we were able to do a SWOT analysis, that's strengths, weaknesses, oppor- strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And we found actually that between the staff sessions and the faculty sessions, this was one of the most appreciated points of what we were doing to have everyone feel as though they were providing some insight into what we were gonna do going forward at the university. So, they offered us, uh, seven key steps to success that I understand that the Disney company is using, and we are going to incorporate those. Basically, basically, the competition is anyone that our customers compare us with, uh, that we need to pay fantastic attention to all details. Everyone needs to walk the walk, and everything we do needs to walk the talk. So, customers are our, our best heard from us through many ears. We don't wanna just limit that to one or two people, but many ears that we hear from. And then, of course, we need to recognize, reward, and celebrate as often as we can, particularly our employees, and that everyone does indeed make a difference. And so, lastly, I wanted to add that our information technology and institutional research units, along with other staff, have completed in-depth training on our class climate software that we're going to. We did that about a week ago, so that our accountability surveys will be functioning well as we place them on our website, uh, along with signage on our offices with the scan codes and the email footers that will be going on all of our campus emails, uh, email addresses that are going out. And so, I wanna thank particularly Chancellor Ellis, Dr. Belton, and all of our colleagues on the Shreveport Campus for assisting us and holding our hands as we've, um, made this leap into class climate. They work with us quite closely. Attorney Clayton, you said yourself, you see great customer service on this campus, where they implemented class climate about, uh, seven years ago, back in twenty-ten. So, we're seeing the results of that here, and we're hoping to see the same thing happen at SUVR and across the system. So, that concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions. They're coming. We actually, we had a few glitches in getting everyone's name correct, so the order is in place, and they should be arriving next week, probably by next Friday. They should be. We're making sure names are spelled correctly. We may have caught a few that we may not have, so we'll fix those along the way.
Yes, Mr. President. Yeah, Dr. Merrick, this is a question that goes to you and Mr. Duncan. Mr. Duncan, in reference to what Dr. Merrick just spoke about, how does the students feel? I mean, I, I remember when I was a student, sometimes the cops were a little kinda hard on you and talked to you bad. I called the president, told him I had a family that's in Southern, and somebody wrote a ticket to a parent trying to get the kid registered. I'm like, "Why are you writing tickets, doing registrations to parents trying to get the kids in?" But is there issues still there in terms of how folks treat these, these students? And sometimes the students have the bad bird, 'cause they're a little, I think you have to understand the deal with it.
Absolutely. I actually ran into a situation myself, uh, just the other day for the, um, faculty complication panel event. Um, I'm no celebrity by any means, however, I worked really hard to obtain the position I have. And I had a faculty member parked in my spot. I had to leave to the event, and there was nowhere for me to park, so I blocked her in. And I got to my vehicle, and she was yelling at me, and we have priority, we're faculty, and this, that, and the other. And I had to explain to her, "No ma'am," you know, respectfully, but at the end of the day, without the students, there essentially is no university. So, I'll bring that full circle. I think that, I think that when we talk about alumni giving back, and just all of, all of those different types of things, we have to consider the experience that the students are getting, and something that Reverend Gann mentioned earlier was our mission and what we're here for. And every action needs to clearly align with that mission every step of the way. And when we don't do that, students, family members, whoever, they experience a certain, that like, that's their truth, that's their perspective about who we are and what we do, and they leave feeling shortchanged. And I deal with that on a daily basis, and I try to, um, share that, and that's why I believe in being very approachable and personal, because I don't think that as a student, you should have priority because your SU president treats this way and that way, when we all pay the same fees and we live in the same building. So, finding a way to ensure overall better, uh, quality assurance is something I'm really interested in.
And Reverend Gann said, you have to take away what I wanted to say better than I would have, and that's the point. In that program and conference, the employees, the staff folks, and how they relate to students and vice versa.
Absolutely. That's one of the things, Attorney Clayton, and thank you, Mr. Duncan, that's one of the things that we learned, that our training cannot just cease with what we did so far in July and August. We've got to incorporate some things going forward, and there'll be some more specialized trainings, particularly on certain aspects of frontline engagement, those employees that are working more directly. Uh, not everyone is working directly with, with our students, not in the same sense that campus police does, and even in the same sense particularly as our faculty, uh, does. So, our faculty did have their session in and of themselves, and I think they also agree that they wanna do, do a little bit more in that regard.
Something else very quickly. So, I'm sure, uh, President Belton, Dr. Merrick would not mind me sharing upon being sworn as my position, I immediately called for a meeting with them where my administration met with them, and that was something that we shared. We knew that this community, uh, this customer service initiative, excuse me, was coming up forward. And on a higher level, one of the things that we discussed was, um, making sure the QR codes were available. So, in addition to individuals wearing these name tags, them being able to scan those QR codes and be able to kind of input the experience that they had. They, so she was to, um, put in their personal information to say, "This is Armand Douglas, this is the experience I had on this day with Attorney Clayton." They would have the ability to choose to do that or not, but to really be able to put in in real time that perspective, because I think that's what makes a difference. We can talk about, you know, the instances and what we've heard, when individuals and students are able to directly put in that input. We have something to gauge from progressively, you know, moving forward. So, doing things like that is something I'm definitely all about, and we discussed something similar to, uh, um, we, we coined it kind of like the secret shopper type of thing. So, uh, again, ensuring overall quality assurance across the board, and I, I'm gonna be kind to you, and, you know, straighten up my type because it's you. But again, ensuring that as many students as possible are getting the experience that they deserve to have.
This is a good, good question, which you're marking on the next. Yeah.
Any other? Any other comments in regards to customer service? Uh, I'm hoping that we're going to see a lot of improvement with this. Uh, there was one other question that I had, and that is with the military family, and military students and our, uh, military parents who are enrolling their children, uh, do we have any special process or procedures that we've set up for those families, or those, um, students to be registered?
Yeah.
We're speaking in terms of military.
Young, you wanna speak to that? I know we have a, a Veterans of Affairs, uh, office facility here.
Yes, ma'am. During our three-six-five JAG orientation, we actually have a special session for the veterans and their spouses or children. In addition to that, our registrar's office, uh, our arm registrar, Miss Valena Johnson, was the person who was trained to facilitate that process. So, we're in the process of having Mr. Ronnie Foster, who's serving as the interim registrar, being trained. Um, and I just talked with Chancellor Memes last night about the possibility of having her registrar to visit with us at least a day or so this week to help, uh, make that process a little bit more efficient.
Thank you. Okay, and now we will move to, uh, Dr. Memes. Don't say anything.
Good morning. Good morning. The chancellor's report is enclosed for review. I would like to say that our fall pre-collegial conference was held this past Monday. Dr. Sharon Green from Susler Campus served as our guest speaker. She spoke to us about togetherness and self-efficacy. We also held our last, uh, new student transfer student orientation, where Dr. Calvin Mackey again served as our guest speaker. We had well over two hundred plus students in attendance, and I'm very proud to say, on that day, not only did we capture the admission of a young lady, but her mother and two sisters also applied for Southern University at New Orleans. So, it was a family affair. On August tenth, I attended the, uh, Brookhaven National Laboratory's, uh, closing ceremony. Four of our students did national research at Brookhaven National Laboratory with Dr. Merri, Cameron, Patty. Usually, your top research students are requested to do oral presentations. Two of the four students from Southern University at New Orleans were selected to do oral presentation. And I'm proud to say, on this past May, three of your honoring men from the first cohort received their degree. I was informed that two of those young men are working in education. They are at the same school, teaching second and fourth grade. The museum studies program received special recognition from the state legislature and from the city council on their work. The National Association of Real Estate had over six hundred participants on Southern University at New Orleans campus. And they, they also did a ribbon-cutting ceremony, and they were pleased with the progress of Southern University at New Orleans and the new buildings that we have coming online. And I'm also proud to say that Ms. Tina Lifford, the actress from Queen Sugar, who su- who plays Aunt Vibe, has a partnership with Southern University at New Orleans, and she has her play, The Circle, that she brought to Southern University at New Orleans, and will be bringing the play back again. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Attorney Clayton.
Dr. Memes is doing an outstanding job in, in New Orleans, but, but she modestly failed to mention that she has entered colloquy with a national figure. You don't have to give the, the extent of the conversation, but I think it's important that you tell us who that person was and, and what she told you at the end of the conversation, and if, if there's anything she could do for Soono, she'll do it. Who is that person you, you have been and talked to?
I had the distinct pleasure of speaking with Dr. Condoleezza Raisson yesterday.
You, you're opening the door to our information, it's a, a good problem.
Thank you.
Call, use her, call on her.
And she, and she said that she thanks Southern University at New Orleans for affording those especially first-generation students an opportunity to attend an institution. And she said if there's anything that she could do to advance Southern University at New Orleans, she's more than happy to do so.
She did refer on her family members to your school, but...
I know, that's one of the, uh, young women with the, uh, NPMG scholarship.
Good job, keep it up.
I, I just wanna comment on Queen Sugar. I know Dr. Phil and I can relate to Queen Sugar.
What is Queen Sugar?
Queen Sugar is, is, uh, you, you gotta watch it on Oprah Winfrey Own Network, and it comes on our lead Wednesday.
Not on its channel.
It's Tuesday, Wednesday, and it, it's focused on the state of Louisiana, sugarcane, but it's about a family who's in the sugarcane business. And all of the things that go along with family issues, transfer, transfer of property from one generation to another, uh, the ups and downs in the, in the agriculture markets. And if you haven't watched it, it's, it's really educational with this story. So, I recommend you watch it. I don't miss it. I've been reading Queen Sugar, like Queen, King Cotton, right? King Cotton, Queen Sugar. You know, I, when I first thought it was about a lady named Sugar, but then it's the sugarcane, and the sugarcane industry, and I always went along and, and there's, I've been in sugarcane industry, Louisiana's history. There are a lot of books written on it, and there's a lot of good books out there, but this is a very good sugar cane.
Thank you. And now, we're gonna have our Susler report from Chancellor Ellis.
Good morning once again. Um, first of all, I thank you again for allowing us to serve you by, uh, hosting you here, uh, in Shreveport once again. It's always a pleasure to have you here on our campus and to provide, uh, whatever you need while you're here. Uh, and I thank, uh, uh, Attorney Clayton for earlier mentioning our, um, employees. And you indulge me for a second. I'd like all of our Susler employees to please stand for a second, so I can publicly recognize you for your service and everything you did to make this meaningful to us. The open houses, it says, but that's a daily occurrence, uh, here. Uh, truly have an excellent staff, and so it helps me, uh, look, look good. And so, one of the things I truly believe, I can't get up here and shine without the people, that I stand on their shoulders to, uh, lead this institution. So, I thank them. Uh, as we move forward, I just wanted to also give you a quick update on, uh, the Jaguar Courtyard refinancing. Uh, back in February, you all approved, uh, us to move forward with the refinancing of our, uh, residential apartments here on campus, uh, which should save a, a term of the loan, about five million dollars on an annual basis after the first year, about a hundred and seventy thousand... an annual basis after the first year, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars uh just because of the the lowering of the interest rates. And uh there was some delay because of the change in administration and some issues with the US Department of Education. This past week, we did have a uh phone call with the HBCU capital financing uh program, and we're once again moving forward with that initiative. And we look to close possibly in early October to mid-October, and that's will be a major savings for the university and allow us to do a lot of things to reinvest in our uh residential apartments here. Uh and so finally, I'd just like to thank the board for your continued support of me and of the campus. And uh I truly appreciate you uh working with me and giving me the all the support I need to to lead this campus. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Ellis. And uh again, I would like to personally express the hospitality that you and your staff have shown to us. And I tried my best to tell each one one of you on an individual basis how uh impressive your personalities, attitudes, and customer service have been to us. Your campus is also very clean, and I would just like to say uh thanks again on on behalf of the board for everything that you've done for us this visit. I'm ready for Dr. Fields.
Good morning. Uh our report is in your in your document, and we encourage you to read it. You can see a lot of various activities that we're doing. Uh among these included uh our first annual administrative retreat we had a couple weeks ago, and it it was a very uh good success. Uh the law school allowed us to to borrow some of their facilities to host it in since we weren't getting out of the resources to have it off campus, but it turned out to be very good. Uh this coming, well, our second football game, we're planning to have a senior uh recruitment date, uh where we will have uh seniors out of high school coming in to uh uh look at our programs and uh along with their parents. And we hope that that will be a very productive day. We're looking for some, when neighborhood of five hundred students coming. Uh we're also uh looking at the, let me put it another way, the 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 school system out of New Orleans is uh uh in the lower Knight Ward, Knight Ward has asked us to consider uh developing an agricultural school there. And so we looking at Joint Washington Harbor uh as 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 a potential agricultural high school for for biologic and earth sciences. Uh uh if we're able to to successfully do this, it will be a system-wide initiative. We uh SUNO is working very closely with the S- Susler, uh obviously the Baton Rouge campus is. And uh talking with with John Pierre, the the law school will also have 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 a part to play in that. And we will offer the courses, not only in agriculture, but uh across the whole gamut as a means of of uh getting students ready before they get to school in terms of the various uh types of courses they need, so so that retention will not be as great once they once they come to college. Lastly, on our uh marijuana initiative, uh we have narrowed the list down from seven to three. Uh next week, we will begin to personally interview these these applicants one uh one-on-one. Uh and and from that, we will we will bring forth uh three three applicants in ranked order uh for this board to to uh select. Now, uh having said that, uh from this meeting to our next meeting is is roughly uh a month and a half uh before we can even s- s- decide the candidate. And so uh uh I'm hoping that the board will consider having a special board meeting just to just on that initiative. Uh the sooner we can we can make a selection, the better it will be. Uh otherwise, we w- w- once the selection is made, it must must be vetted by the uh commissioner of agriculture in terms of security background, and that could take anywhere from sixty days to 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 six months even. Uh so we're trying to eliminate that uh as much time as possible, but I would just like you, the board, to consider that. We are moving forward with that initiative.
Uh thank you, Dr. Fields. And at this time, I'm going to say we, as a board, we would have to take that under advisement, and uh we will get back with you and with uh President Belton on that issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Our next meeting date is, what is it? The twenty seventh.
So you want you want you want the the record, the the three persons or the three entities that you've identified that you wish to advance to the board, why can't we consider them on the twenty second of September?
Uh 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 and you can. The 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 question is a time factor. The the soon.
You'd like to get it done soon, is what you're saying.
Right. The sooner we can select it, the sooner uh they can begin the background check. We have no no uh way of knowing how long that's gonna be, but the longer we wait, the 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 faster our competitor will be on the market, and and we want to make sure we get market share.
Be- before we move into that era, I would like to ask you, Dr. Field, we started discussing uh the the upcoming process and procedure that you're gonna use. So before we get to that, I'd like to speak with Dr. Belton and you. Uh and uh then we will move forward from that. Board, if you will allow me that opportunity.
Sure. I'd just like to say, Madam Chair, I'm willing to, given the importance of this and the urgency in terms of the timeframe, I'm willing to make myself available. If the leadership is so inclined to call for a emergency.
Special.
Yes, ma'am.
So am I. I I was to help facilitate this. I agree with him. The quicker we can get out there, we can get out there quickly. And so I hope the rest of my colleagues would, maybe two days after he we we read whatever he sent to since to us, that you convene us and just have us come in for that special. But I think it's that important to Dr. Fields as well as to the program that he's doing. I'm willing to make that sacrifice as early as the next week to come in and do what he wants us to do, so he can get his program over.
Can I see it here, Dr. Field?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I just need to point out that special meeting.
We can't hear you.
A special meeting under our bylaws requires ten days' written notice, which is almost two weeks in and of itself. So if you're considering a special meeting, the Congress said that the ten-day notice required.
Thank you.
Dr. Dr. Torb, at what stage will these meetings take place, in which you're gonna narrow this to to the three candidates? The day was that any week?
Uh twenty, I think it's twenty first, twenty seventh, it's Monday and Tuesday.
Next week. So you're gonna make that decision no later than the twenty second. We count ten days from that. That puts us into uh September anybody, the second of September. Just trying to see uh the timeline, the notification appointment.
So let me ask you about that ten-day requirement, Mr. Field. Is the ten-day requirement uh closely above putting items on the agenda? I don't see a problem with calling it an emergency meeting. Uh.
It's a twenty-four hour.
When when you have a couple of deals within twenty-four hours notice. I think the ten-day requirement is some self-imposed deal we have to say that the president's to have adjourned to us prior to that, but without yield to whatever that book says.
The bylaws as special needs, and then it says notice shall be sent by certified mail returned received requested facsimile or other electronic transmission to each member of the board at least ten calendar days before the time of the meeting. We have asked the board to waive the special meeting requirement in the event of emergencies or natural disasters. But what I'm pointing out is that we're aware now that we may need a special meeting. We should try to adhere to the ten-day requirement.
Can we decide now to at least waive the policy, then that will allow the leadership to make the decision?
We can do it at that board meeting.
You can do it at.
We can do it at this meeting.
What what reason would you ask?
The question was, can we at today waive the the requirement that you would like to kind of make that decision and take you out of the question. So we need a motion, and we need this this motion to defer.
How much does that require? You'd have to add it to the agenda, which requires unanimous consent.
Majority to add to the agenda. We need very bad.
You'd have to have unanimous consent to add.
Uh okay, we're we're trying to do now is get the motions lined up. So now the motion, all all the motions that we set aside.
No, it's gonna split the agenda. We put aside. You did amend the agenda.
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Can we can we do it on the other business?
We're doing it now.
We're doing it now.
So right now, we have a motion by our board.
We have a motion on the floor. Uh Dr. Torb, will you again take the motion?
The motion is to place on the agenda uh an action item for.
Waiving ten-day requirement for a special meeting to consider the cannabis project.
It has been moved and second. Um pardon? Okay, it has been moved and second. Do we have uh, are you ready for the question? All in favor? Any uh names? Any opposition?
We're doing this on the, and I'm not the attorney, but we're doing this on the information item. We have another item down here, other business. Can we add it on the other business and do it in other business?
We we didn't specify where in the agenda it's added. It's clearly being added as an action item.
Okay, so it's an action item on the information line.
Yeah, it would be added.
All right.
No names, right? Motion carries.
Now now we need a motion to to waiver, to waiver the provision of the bylaws.
Wait, wait, let's get it straight. Make sure you said.
I move that we waived the ten-day requirement of the bylaws for calling the meeting.
And that's both that page. Two, I make that motion. You don't, okay, you made our second.
One, you make the motion, the other can second. Okay, uh be ready for the question.
And I just want to make sure that we're making that the motion is for the consideration of this cannabis project. This is a this is not a blanket waiver. This is just for this. We want to make sure that it didn't say that in the.
Question, I'll I'll accept it, ma'am. Question, question. Uh if we're gonna have a special meeting, I'd like to see us do the minutes that we didn't approve here on that item. Can we add that, counsel?
That's not in my motion. Uh actually, the the motion to amend the agenda was limited to a special meeting for considering the cannabis project.
Why not?
Yes.
I I'm thrown, man. I'm uncomfortable.
Yes, good draw, yes.
I'm thrown, man.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
No, we can we can wait till after.
Any opposition? Any names? No. Motion carries.
No, Madam Chair, yeah.
Yes.
So I'm looking at the B calendar, not my calendar. Uh can we set it for August twenty-eighth? I mean, you got us here instead of having the calls all. Now you can we go August twenty-eighth? One o'clock in the evening, some folks are traveling. I don't care.
Will you be ready? Uh Dr. Field, I'm asking Dr. Field, will you be ready for us to?
It's the first week of September.
Your attention, please.
That date. That that date will run fine.
That is the date that mo- most of the board members will be here anyhow. So that's a good suggestion. My question was, uh as. Yes, we were talking about the date. You will not be here on the twenty eighth? Okay.
Any difference to, we got a large, we got half of our board that are not here.
Okay.
Well, another six, at least seven. And I I well, I I mean, I plan to be there on the twenty eighth. I do think we ought to allow you and the president to poll and others to see, because I'm sure some others may want to waive. This is a major decision we've got to make. So I wouldn't want us to just do this with such a short house. And I do respect what Mr. Clayton is trying to do, but why don't we have Mr. uh Banks or whomever, uh Mr. Wells to poll the the members to see and give us a several dates to include the twenty eighth?
You should clear that polling up. You only mean to poll and see if.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, well, in that case, we would need a recommended second date. We have the twenty-eighth as one of the dates.
Or then you give back that.
Or September first. I mean, that's a football weekend. There may be a lot of, that's a Friday. There may be a lot of folks coming to Baton Rouge that weekend for a football game. Or that Saturday, you know, we don't play on a Saturday.
Oh, yes, we got it. It's two, it's two Saturday.
Okay, that's the second, am I correct? Uh Dr. Memes? That's second, uh September seventh. That will be a second date. The first date is gonna be uh August twenty-eighth. Second date suggested would be September seventh.
No, ma'am, I I I was, no, I was suggesting first. Saturday is the preparation for the municipal search, so so then I'll have a day uh in the municipal. Uh the first, I said the first, that gives us uh September first through September seventh day. The poll, there's more than a week.
We can, rather than use the second, uh we would use the first week of September. The we would use a date in the first week of September. So we will poll, we'll ask Mr. Wells to poll and see if they can come first on August twenty-eighth or a second date in the first week.
From the Rayneax over here. So. Rayneax.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Wells, are are we are we suggesting September eighth as a date? Okay, date set, September eighth.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, we are ready now for uh, we're ready now for Chancellor Ellis.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh I wanted to uh, you had the report from us from the law center, but I wanted to thank uh Chancellor Ellis and his staff for the nice uh gift that was waiting me in the in the room. It was very, very nice, and I enjoyed the Oreo cookies. And uh I wanted to uh again uh let the board know that September one, nineteen forty-seven was the first day of opening of the law school, and we will have some very special events on September one, as well as you will be getting invitations for the evening of August thirty-first, and then of course for the evening of September one. So we really appreciate you being able to participate in any way that you can. Um one other item, or a couple other items, and I would be very, very brief, but uh we are really excited to tell you that uh our enrollment for the fall is up, and uh we have five hundred ninety-four schedules and about four hundred ninety-six students that are paid, and we keep counting them to be paid today. And I wanted to uh in the, we are very, very blessed that uh we have the support of all the board members and the president. And in addition to Mr. Clayton's daughter being in law school, I wanted to announce that we have the brother of Mr. uh Roberts and the daughter of President. and the daughter of the president that's going to join us. They're already joining us because we started playing.
You keep Mr. Ruggles' brother away from my daughter. Right now.
I want to come to that with.
At fields and the cold, but we'll be gunshots at that with you.
And one last thing, which is, uh, last week, I had the pleasure of being with Mr. Horrell in a meeting with the CEO of the W.K. Kellogg Foundation. And I, I really think that we are going to see some positive things from the Kellogg Foundation, and they will be announcing very soon. So actually, Southern's on two fronts. Obviously, the Vodkran Project, but the second is that they will be announcing by press the awarding of, uh, some dollars to the foundation for Louisiana and Southern's, uh, activity in relationship to a process they call Truth, Race Healing and Transformation, which is going to be very, very timely, given what's been happening in this country the last few days. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor Pierre.
Madam Chair.
Yes. I recognize you.
Uh, I, I want to commend Chancellor Pierre. He took time this past week, and as we all know, it's been a very eventful week with all of, all that's been going on in Charlottesville and throughout the country here. He took it upon himself to write a letter to the community. Uh, as, as an attorney who is educating future attorneys here at our university, I think that it's, uh, it is important what he did say. I'd like for him, if you would, just to elaborate on that.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Findell. Well, the, the letter to the Law Center community about Charlottesville was in an attempt to, one, highlight why it is important that we are who we are, especially in light of the fact that the man who made the creation of the law school possible was a man who fought against the very forces that are rearing their heads today. He, he, he was a courageous man, and he did a very audacious and bold thing of making his demand. And so, if, why not understand why we are who we are and celebrate our diversity, uh, especially in light of the fact that we have those individuals who are now pushing another agenda that is much different from the diversity and inclusion that we are a model of at the Southern University Law Center and Southern University System and, quite frankly, HBCUs. That, that is, that is the bigger thing that we have to recognize. And yesterday, uh, being here to see the ribbon cutting for the building name after Representative Alphonse Jackson and hearing from Pastor Blake, basically, our communities have always advocated for the rights that we seek. And so we should always acknowledge and be on the forefront to say that what is happening in America today is wrong. And I just thought that this was the time to do it. I'm not the only one, several other leaders of law schools are doing the same thing, but I thought it was an opportunity for us to say that we're going to lead in this particular arena and, uh, and make our voices heard.
Thank you, Chancellor. Doctor, yeah.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, good afternoon. Chancellor Ellis and your staff, thank you very much for your hospitality. Um, one announcement, we held our opening faculty convocation on Tuesday and standing room only, the room was packed to capacity. It was a very, very good convocation, I've heard nothing but great comments. And, uh, our honorable Duncan actually served on a panel, and I'd like for him just to give some brief comments about his experience.
So thank you again for the opportunity. It's, it's certainly a pleasure to be able to now serve the students, but I know the connotations and the perspective that people have about student government, typically of just activities and things like that, but to be taken seriously and to be allowed to engage in other arenas, especially on some of these important academic affairs, and to be able to speak on that panel, which was an opportunity to directly address the entire faculty. And the topic was institutional effectiveness. And again, to be able to present the student perspective and bring my own perspective, as well as, you know, of course, speaking on behalf of the students I represent across the system on subjects as relates to professional responsibility, um, instructional strategies, student achievement and professional development, and just really being able to have a seat at the table and to candidly give that perspective in words we receive positively. I appreciate the opportunity, and I look forward to seeing some of those changes put in place and just continue to be engaged.
Thank you very much for your comments, I have no other ones, ma'am.
Thank you, uh, are there any other comments?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Just to piggyback on, uh, what Chancellor Pierre said. Uh, back in the day, Dr. Jesse Stone was the president of the system. I was a Kellogg National Fellow, and I had the unique opportunity to travel around the world as a Kellogg Fellow and around the nation for three years. Ended up, uh, in Brazil for a couple of weeks. And we, uh, we were able to get a number of grants from Kellogg for the university. And my service on that led to several international grant. Dr. Jesse and Stone Junior was also a consultant. So was our consultant on moving Kellogg into its new direction. And we got Kellogg into the South, into Mississippi, into New Orleans, and into Southern Africa. So the Kellogg Fellows and C90 on the board, they announced a new board. Uh, we have a fellows organization, and we go somewhere in the world every year to try to impact international affairs. This year, we're going to Cuba, provided that I get funded. But just want to say, keep, going to keep it on with Kellogg, and I want to be invited to whatever they should have, because they'd be proud to see that I'm still alive. Thank you.
And now, and now for other business, um.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Second ago, my colleague to my right, Mr. Hill, leaned over to me as the young student was talking. He said, "Man, we got to cook." What he meant by that was, I think you just saw it, he said, "This young man will now give us a total perspective from the student's perspective." I look forward to working with you, Mr. Duncan, I look forward to you educating me, and I look forward to you holding our feet to the fire to make sure we adhere to what you said earlier, that without y'all, we would not be here. So, so I look forward for this new venture and, uh, whole year, bringing up. Alright.
Absolutely. Students first.
Yes. He's a whole lot of people, fuck that trust back to you.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Dr. Ellis, when you've talked, uh, I have concerns about some rollos in some of the buildings. Will you please check that out, please? I got some complaints about some rollos in some of the buildings. Is that an issue?
You mean, like you can tell them people like rats, like people who?
Yeah, unfortunately, that's a, a major issue here, and so we continue to battle.
And yet I'd like for the board to be aware of this, why we're bringing it up. Because, see, things like that, we need to know about it.
Right, it's.
And what are we doing, what are we doing, that's a terrible thing. So what are we doing out of that?
Uh, we've tried several things, uh, for the past six months, um, and, uh, if the next round of, uh, pest control strategies don't work, we're just going to do what we call a bomb and just try to excavate for a couple of days and try to do that, but it's just a major issue. Uh, but we put several strategies, one involving staff, trying to get them to not leave food in trash cans and things like that. We've contracted with, uh, Dexcon, I believe, is the pest controller, the traps, and we have aggressively done that. But if the next round of, uh, strategies don't work, then we just have to do something a little bit more drastic.
Thank you, alright. Thanks for bringing it up, Dr. Gans, right before we go eat. Tony, you have, uh, uh, uh. Get, uh, uh, get, get Dr. Fields to help here, I see where he can give you some expertise there. You know, bring him over with it, seriously, because that's a real problem.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a problem.
And I do, because I want the board to be aware. See, many times we see this loss of thing, but I said, if you, you need to let us know really the down and the dirty, and here's where we can help, and I, I think that's really important. Now, the second thing I wanted to say is this morning, and, uh, for all of our chancellor, uh, Secretary of State Tillerson had a press conference on race relations. And he said he was looking for more diverse, a more diverse State Department. He said that Spelman, Morehouse, and Fornane and Eamonn do a good job of maintaining relationships with the State Department. But there are more than one hundred HBCUs. In other words, he's saying that he want to see the State Department do a better job recruiting. So I want us to hold his feet to the fire. And I, I know we, you may not have gotten that, but if he's saying that he sat down in public talk, we want the President to hold his feet to the fire in that regard. The other thing that I would like to add is, uh, two other things I just want to mention. Uh, what is the policy about the use of alcohol on our campuses? And I'm talking to the President, I guess, because I mean overall. So I'm talking to the President, I, I'm talking overall, I'm not, I'm not talking here. I'm talking to the President, I mean overall, I'm talking about the system we have now.
Matt, could you take a shot of that? I think it's unique to each campus, uh, and I think, um, why don't, why don't you take a shot of that?
A shot.
They got the information and get it back to you, if you allow us to do that, and I don't want to.
Well, please, and, and, and the reason I say that, because, you know, I thought about our activity last night, and I said, hey, when I'm on my way home, I said, now, that's not a good pitch. It's one thing, you know, but, you know, when we on, on that much campus and we're in this closed location there, is one thing. And those around me know I'm not, you know, I'm not the kind to beat your head with drinking, you know, is the first thing. But then, I think this is a state facility, that building is an education hall we would need. And I think sometimes we need to rethink it because of the signal that we send out to the young people. And that's why I bring it up, because it's something I thought about going home this night. It was pretty, I think it's something we need to look at.
I mean.
Okay, appreciate that. Now, the last thing, I want to really encourage those who are believers. If there was a time we need to pray, it's praying time. And I just believe what the word of God says, that is, that if my people are called by my name, will honor themselves, pray, seek my face, turn from their wicked ways, then will I give them heaven, and I will forgive their sins, and I will heal their soul. We have, we have a president who knows not the Lord, who does not care about anybody. And yourself, you will have made, hatred has been stirred up, not only in our country, not just black on white, black, white on white, and even across the international community. And, and, and I think if we don't realize how close we are to something catastrophic happen. So I call upon all of you who are believers, if there ever was a time we need to pray, we need to be prayed. Thank you, Tony.
At this time, thank you, Reverend Gans. And at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Wells if he will come forward and, um, do his due diligence.
Go to the church, open. Uh, we have, uh, two birthdays to, to pass out, and I went to a, uh, conference last meeting, so I wasn't there. So I gave, I gave this person a card to be passed out. When I got back to my desk, the card was on my desk, I said, oh, Lord, not this person, he got to get his. So it's the last month of Reverend Gans.
Well, we found a buzz in.
And Reverend, uh, Sammy Tork, who's not here.
I call that the, I call that the submission.
He does a very good job, he had it ready for our.
It's not a problem, it's not a problem.
Um.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. And to the board, I would just like to say, uh, give Mr. Wells a special shout out. We know Maya is, is not with us at the moment, but I noticed he put some special touches on the, um, on our, our information and materials today. We have our tabs, thank you so much. And he gave us, uh, each a sheet for notes in case we wanted to write. So thank you for improving our, our, uh, literature each day, each month. Uh, do we have any other things that we would like to? I want to do a shout out to all of the alums who have been helping us, uh, with our students, because our students should come first. If we have no students, then we have no university. If we have no university, then we have no system. Again, just be encouraged and continue to influence our alums to support and recruit our students. Thank you, and I'm ready for.
I move.
A John. Thank you, it has been moved in second. Thanks for coming.
Boy, give me a drink, Reverend.